Hi, you want to get it? But the next thing.
On the screen. Okay, is that. Please. Please.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, April 21st. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Great to see a packed house here tonight. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, please use your hand. Use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If you're calling in old school via phone, press star nine and rate to raise your hand and then when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to announce that our boards and commissions annual recruitment has begun. The city is recruiting for advisory. Members on all boards and commissions, please apply today and help ensure that every voice in our community is heard. The deadline to apply is Friday, May 2nd. Visit cityofSanMateo.org for more details.
Mayor Newsom, if I may, we can take roll call and we can move on to our next step.
I apologize. I skipped roll call. City Clerk, please take a roll.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Councilmembers Fierko Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. All right, we'll start off tonight with Agenda Ceremonial Item Number One. San Mateo High School's 4.0 Grade Point Average Graduate Recognition. This is one of my favorite ceremonial items of the year. We get to celebrate our students with a 4.0 grade point average. We have a lot of people who are excited to congratulate with us tonight. So the way this is going to work is I'm going to call up the principals one at a time for the school and the students will be ushered in to be congratulated by council members. And each school will have an opportunity to have a photograph with the entire council after each school's full list of names has been read. Photos will take place at the speaker podium area right here. Once each school has been recognized, we will ask that you exit the council chamber and allow room for the next school to come in. So our first school tonight is Aragon and unfortunately, Principal Michael Jones is under the weather and unable to make it. So Rob, me, and Danielle will be calling and greeting the students. So we'll move forward and do that.
I can do this. Uh, there are four students. We have a huge list, but only four are here in attendance tonight. Any others are here, please speak it up now. Okay. If not, we're gonna go ahead. First one is Melody Chen. Second one is Andrew Dong. Next up is Jack Long. Final person here today is Sora Vizutans.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and public. My name is Jeff Gilbert. I guess I'll talk this way. I'm the principal of Hillsdale High School. It's an honor to be here today and represent our school. Like every year, school years are full of ups and downs. I think this one perhaps more downs. It's, I think, I feel obligated to talk about the difficulty this year of our dealing with the loss of a classmate. And in that loss, also a reminder of the amazing resilience of our young people. And as with every downturn or every challenge that we faced and there have been multiple remarkable events and accomplishments this year. These students who you see in front of you are actors and athletes. They are poets. They are activists. They are scientists and researchers. They are friends and colleagues to each other. They're really a remarkable group of people representing a remarkable class of individuals. So very proud to be here tonight. I, I think that a lot about, some of you may not go to work every day and be surrounded by 1,500 adolescents. That's, I forget that that's not the typical life experience. And then sometimes you run into people who somehow are worried about the future. And oh my goodness, kids these days. It's these days, we've been saying that since Socrates. And I'm here to let you know that kids these days are amazing. And if we can handle our business, I think we can turn it over to some young people who are compassionate. They're thoughtful. They're caring. They're open-minded and they're visionary in ways that I know I was not at 18. So it is my pleasure to be here and thank you for this honor. And so with that, I'd like to introduce valedictorians for Hillsdale High School.
Sure, Principal. Deputy Mayor Lorraine will be presenting with you.
Do have a few absences. But we'll call their names and we'll hold those and deliver them. I'm gonna put on my reading glasses. Dante Allendorf, not here. Kylan Brooks. The Darth DeCosta. Nikki Donovan. Lauren Edwards. Kyle Fukamoto. Gabriel Geiger. Not here, Maya Guerra. Also not here, Peyton Higa. Naya Sheng. Darren Kalubjian. Not here, Shreyakashya. And I introduce Miles Kim. Lexi Kuka. Not here, Anya Lynn. Introduce Lauren Matsumoto. Also not here, Abby McQuade. Leilani Muneno. Oh, not here, Noah Neus. Isaiah O'Yang. Aiden Reyes. Jamie Seligman. Adrian Shin. Angelina Stumm. Vivian Sway. Alva Sunil. Megan Weiss. And Nicholas Wong.
Okay, we're all gonna come back into the center. Before we do, students, if you would open your certificates, make sure you're holding them the right way, right side up. And we're gonna come up to the front for a picture and the whole council's gonna join us.
Come on over.
Upward Danielle, where Councilmember Sora is speaking.
All right, we're good.
Everybody see their certificates. All right, on three, we're gonna say what? Go Knights. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Really appreciate it. Great to see you as always. Congratulations. Congratulations. So we have some very eager parents waiting in the overflow room. So if you are here in support of a student from Hillsdale or Aragon, we please ask that you exit the chamber this time. And if you are in the overflow room from San Mateo High and Sarah, please make your way into the chamber. All right, next up, San Mateo High. It's gonna be. This will be presented by Principal Yvonne Chu and Councilmember Nicole Fernandez. Welcome, Principal Chu.
Parents were in here so they didn't miss the presentation of.
Sure. Do we still have people coming in, you think? Can take another minute. Aging San Mateo High parents, San Mateo High parents, please report to the council chambers.
Okay. Good evening, San Mateo City Council, Mayor Newsom. My name's Yvonne Chu and I am the principal of San Mateo High School and I am pleased to introduce to you our 20 valedictorians in the class of 20. our 20 valedictorians in the class of 2025. Among our group of distinguished students, we have current and aspiring musicians, vocalists, actors, scientists, athletes, journalists, dancers, artists, and leaders. Two of our valedictorians are middle college students having spent their junior and senior years at CSM. Among the 20, they have taken 164 advanced placement classes over their four years of high school, ranging from one AP class to 12 AP classes. Their interests are varied and include, but are not limited to, mock trial, math team, robotics, tennis, soccer, track and field, football, basketball, badminton, golf, water polo, cross-country, rocketry, reading, volunteerism and tutoring, sustainability, mental health, travel, baking, cars and coding. So, we have a wide variety of interests. It fills my heart with joy to see that they made the most of their high school years to become involved in extracurricular activities that have developed, supported, and grew their passions. It is my honor and privilege to announce and introduce you to San Mateo High School's Class of 2025 Valedictorians. Tatum Fritz. Siddharth Gohi. Megan Ainone. Jonas Mukun. Cameron Palma. Topias Rajamaki. Trisha Sabadra. Rashika Sahu. Sivan Surig. Andrew Song. Anya Voss. Henry Wong. And Jang Ki So.
Alright, congratulations, students. We're gonna come up to the front to take our group picture. Before you do, please open your certificates. Make sure you fold it back and have it faced right, the right way up. So, it's readable. And come on back up here to the front and the council's gonna join you for a photo.
Tall in the back.
Congratulations, everybody.
Yes.
Thank you, parents.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so when you get done with school, come back here. We need boards and commissions. We need future politicians to be up here on the dais. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Deputy Mayor.
We should say that we have two councilmembers who are high school alum or Aragon alum.
We already did it. Yeah, well, should've. Alright, coming up to the stage is Sarah, Assistant Principal, Mary Beth Ortiz. And she's joined by Councilmember Lisa Diaz Nash. Can we have the Sarah man give us a hi? Everybody, you all here? Alright, let's go ahead and start. Welcome.
Welcome and good evening. We're so pleased to be here, Mayor Rob Newsom Jr. and members of the city council. It's such a privilege and honor for me to represent our boys here tonight. These are valedictorians of the class of 2025. And we are so very proud of the excellent work that they're doing at Unipro Sarah High School, not only in the classroom, but outside of the classroom, whether it's on the fields, in the community, whether it's at robotics, or it's through Mission and Brotherhood where they're teaching our younger students how to become better young men and do, make better decisions as they're going through life. On behalf of our school president, Mr. Mike Fideli, our principal, Charlie McGraw. Again, my name's Mary Beth Ortiz. I'm Assistant Principal for Student Life at Sarah. And we are so very proud to have our young men here. All of these students have been a part of our honors and AP programs since their freshman year. They're all members of the California Scholarship Federation and the National Honor Society, to name just a few. But more importantly, they are all making their transition right now to their next step where they're going to be on their own and becoming the young men that we all know that they can be. So, our first valedictorian who's here this evening is Andy Cheng, who will be attending Cal in the fall. Our next valedictorian is Teddy Cheng, who will be attending Harvard. Demetrius Cavallos will be attending UC San Diego. Anon George will be attending UCLA. Next, we have Grant Gibbs, who will be attending Boston College. And last but certainly, certainly not least, we have Jaden Navarro, who is currently deciding between UCLA and Notre Dame.
Congratulations, gentlemen. If you guys could please open your certificates so that they're right reading and hold them in front of you. And the council's gonna come down with a photo, for a photo with you guys. Okay, we're gonna say, go Padres on three. One, two, three! Congratulations, great work. Very Aragon. Okay. Should we give a minute to clear the room? Yeah, maybe just... Five-minute recess? Let's do like a three minutes. We wanna keep moving. We're gonna do a three-minute recess. Coming back at 35 after. Three-minute recess. Good evening, welcome back. So, we're moving on from a ceremonial item to consent calendar and then actual new business. So, as we move on from the ceremonial item, I just wanna remind people that when people peek, when people speak publicly, we should not have any clapping, cheering, jeering. It, it makes it uncomfortable for people to speak. So, we wanna make sure everyone is heard. And for that reason, we ask that you respectfully do not clap, jeer, cheer, or anything after you've heard people's public comments. Okay, coming up first on the calendar is our consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, can you please read and query council and public?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, council member and city clerk, travel authorization. Let me one moment. Public records management services agreement. Item number four, Hillsdale Caltrain Station Bicycle Access Gap Closure Project Agreement. Item number five, wastewater treatment plant biosolids hauling and disposal change order. Item number six, collection system construction management services for clean water program amendments. Item number seven, human resources department classification updates, reallocation, and new position approval. Item number eight, sewer system management plan update and recertification. And finally, item number nine, construction management services for Central Park Playground Improvement Projects Contract.
Okay, is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? I am going to potentially pull item four for just a little bit more conversation. And I'll wait and see what public comment says and then we'll go from there. If any member of the public wishes to comment on any consent calendar items, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Mr. Clerk, do you have an idea of public comment for consent calendar items?
For consent calendar items, I have no request to speak in chamber. I do have one hand raised in our virtual environment. Deborah, just to clarify for you, this is for consent calendar items only, not other agendized items. So, if you wish to speak on items not on the agenda or another agenda item on the, on the agenda, please keep your hand raised and we'll call you. Okay, so we have two requests to speak on the consent calendar. So, when I call your name, please unmute your mic. Deborah, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Thank you very much, the council. My comment is about number four on the consent calendar. And it seems that that $300,000 would be better spent towards the grade separation projects that are desperately needed for pedestrian, train, and car safety, and also the noise pollution in San Mateo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Maria. Maria, please unmute your mic.
Hi, could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thanks. I'm just also reiterating what Deborah is saying. I'm advocating on behalf of a large portion of Samitans that have not been able to live a single day without Caltrain's intrusive noise pollution ever since August of 2025. I know this sounds redundant, but just letting the council kind of know, remind you of us that we're still living here. It's a daily situation. We've counted up. It's about 2,040 train horn sounding every day. And this is from 5:30 a.m. until 12:30 midnight. So, as you can imagine, this really changed our way of life. After numerous complaints to Caltrain, we are always cited with the FRA Train Horn Rule 49, Part 222. And they're saying that this was implemented since 2005, but we must have had a quiet zone before because we've been living here since the 80s. And only since 2025 have we actually started hearing the train other than just the routine gate closures and the bells that we hear with that whenever a train would come by. I mean, within our earshot, we're literally hearing 18 to 20 trains, but horns, I'm sorry, per train going by. And I mean, that's just a little much. And we live three blocks away from the tracks. We're in the Sunny Bay neighborhood. So, anyhow, it's been almost nine months of enduring this. And we are just advocating on behalf of those that are also suffering in silence, calling on all the council members to continue your advocacy for your constituents and to try to fine-tune and cater the federal rules and just make them viable for our city and its residents. And we really do look forward to a quiet zone everywhere, not just in certain parts, but in San Mateo, the Fifth Crossing, the Ninth Street Crossing, all of these areas, they just need to be, we really need help with this. Also, since I have 30 more seconds, I'm just going to also advocate on not making bike lanes on Humboldt. Our residents need their parking spots. Our residents need their parking spots. And we just hope that that doesn't go through. Make bike lanes in other places. Let our senior citizens have their parking spots. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. That concludes public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. So for four, can we vote on everything else and then bring back? Okay.
Yeah, we'll take a motion on consent calendar items two and three and five through nine.
So moved.
Mr. Clerk, please take call roll.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Svirko Guditsky?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, I was hoping we could get an update on two things. With item four, could we talk to the fact that is this budget that could be spent on rail corridor improvements, or is it specific to bike lanes? And then two, if you have the opportunity, could you give a little update on the quiet corridor that they're asking about?
So the item this evening that you have on the consent calendar is specifically for the Bike Ped project itself here. It's not for the Train Quiet Zone noise initiative that we have. We're going to actually be coming back to the council in August of this year. We only have one meeting in August. I think it's the third Monday in August. We'll be discussing next steps for the Train Quiet Noise project. And that's looking at the six at grade crossings going northbound past Hayward Park Station, and also includes the pedestrian at grade crossings at Hayward Park Station. If the council decides to move forward with a project, we would then move forward for implementation, take about a year of construction in order to create the city to be designated an entire Train Quiet Zone area. So then there'd be minimal Train Horn noise because we would in fact build that project.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any idea why this project has stalled out?
So we had staffing transition in the department. And so as we have increased, brought on new staff onboard, we're able to get going again.
Okay, but to reiterate, would this be something that could be moved from one budget to another? Or is this specific to the cycling budget, the bike lane budget?
So a portion could be moved to a different budget, and that is the Peninsula off-ramp. I believe it's like about $140,000 that could go to a different transportation project. But really what we're looking at is the connectivity of bike and pedestrian access between Delaware, the 28th Avenue, and El Camino and the Hillsdale Station. That's what this project is looking to design.
Thank you. And the last question was, could this potentially result in the loss of actual vehicle lanes going underneath 28th Avenue?
I'd have to call up our public works director, Matt Fabry. I don't have the details of the overall design if we would lose a lane of travel on that. Matt, do you want to come up and address? Yep, he's coming on up.
Thank you.
The project is designed would not take away lane of travel.
Okay, thank you. I love those type of answers. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, please take roll.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Svirko Guditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez? And Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to general, sorry, lost my place, general public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. I've received one request for non-agendized items in person. And for our virtual environment, I see two hands raised. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda and are participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand. Now I will give you just a moment to do so. So Mayor Newsom, that is a total of three speakers, which per council adopted rules and procedures will be three minutes per speaker. We'll take our in-house speaker first, Michael Seville. Michael, if you could please come up to the podium.
Good evening. I'm here again to talk about the problem at the San Mateo Golf Course with the reservation system. I've been in San Mateo Belmont for over 50 years now. And I mourn the loss of Bay Meadows Golf Course. And Poppy Creek, Poplar Creek is a jewel. And there's been just a lot of bad decisions being made over there over the years. And I felt it was time to stand up on this particular issue, which is the VIP membership reservation system. As it is, a VIP can pay $30 a month and make a reservation 14 days in advance. Residents with a resident card, we have to show our place of residence. We pay 20 bucks a year, but we can only make reservations eight days in advance. The problem is, is the VIPs are making reservations, not showing up. So you'll have openings that no golfers are able to use unless they happen to walk up or... And there's happens to be a time there. But anyway, a lot of people don't get a chance to play golf who want to play golf. I played golf there on a Saturday morning at 8:15, all by myself. Nobody in front of me, nobody behind me. So if you figure people are paying 30 bucks a month, yeah, you're getting some money from that. But you're also losing a heck of a lot in lost tee times. Not only that, but it's sort of a goodwill loser for the city of San Mateo in that residents, you know, we feel like we're shut out. We can't have our friends there. We can't play at our own golf course unless we pay for the VIP membership, which puts us into a group of over 300 people who each have three other people that want to play golf also. So we're looking at, you know, scrambling over outsiders. I was able to talk to, looks like I'm not going to have enough time, but I'm going to keep doing this. I'm going to be back here over and over until we get something working. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. Thanks so much for your service. Mike Swire serves on various transportation bodies, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. I wanted to thank the council for the great meeting that we held, what was it, two, three weeks ago on the 10192 Direct Connect project. As someone commented at the meeting, it was one of the few times we've seen the community really unite. I've seen statistics upward of 300 people attending, and I think all but one of them were aligned with the council. And I definitely very much appreciate you taking immediate action. And I know that some of you are working on the letter to the TA and CCG and our elected leaders in Sacramento. And I hope that that gets done as soon as possible. And I know Foster City will be considering this in the coming weeks. I actually just called in for a comment there. But I encourage the city to go forward with this letter regardless in the interim. I also share everybody's concern with eminent domain. That was obviously the focus of the night. But I was also really encouraged to hear so many people bring up induced demand and the fact that the project itself, regardless of the eminent domain issue, was not a good use of money because it fails to address the congestion problem that people said it was intended to fix. There were, I think most of the people agreed with that. But I think even on the council, I heard some comments to the effect of, well, maybe there's an alternative project, or if we tweak it, we could figure out a way to widen the highway and improve congestion. That is just not possible. That defies the laws of supply and demand, which say whenever you make it easier or cheaper to do something, more people will do it. So if you're really looking to reduce congestion, one, I'm not sure it's possible. Or two, I would encourage you to look at transit and bike and pedestrian things that don't necessarily reduce congestion, but certainly allow us to get more people through without more widening of highways and all of the resulting externalities that those can cause. We just widened 101, and the TAs just admitted that that did not improve congestion as we had originally hoped it would. So thanks again for that. Let me know if I can help with the letter, and I look forward to that soon. Finally, I just wanted to speak out against the comment that was made before in terms of the Humboldt bike lanes. I disagree that those should be removed. They're very important to safety on the most dangerous street in the city. There was a post online that I forwarded earlier where people were complaining about their neighbors having 10 cars on the street, and they do not move week to week. It seems like that is a very easy fix for us to address before we make our streets less safe, especially for little kids that hope to bike to school. We should do a permit parking program there, as was promised to the community several years ago when the bike lanes were installed. And I know that Bay Meadows is also looking at something like this. And thank you to the mayor for attending a meeting. I think it's this week on that subject. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker for public comment on this item is Deborah Rosenfeld. Deborah, please unmute your mic.
Thank you again, mayor and city council. My question, my first question has changed slightly since Mr. Kajikian presented, but I have a few follow-up questions about the Caltrain Quiet Zone. The first is, what specifically will be occurring at that August meeting that he mentioned? And also, can this meeting be moved up much sooner? And second of all, when will the Quiet Zone be expected to be fully implemented? Those are two questions I have for Mr. Kajikian. And I also, prior to this meeting, had questions about what city council has been working on to get an immediate term solution to the Train Horn noise. It's been three months since the January Caltrain meeting where 65 people attended, and the noise continues in the same way. I have since that meeting stood at the corner of Pacific Avenue and 19th Avenue and watched many trains go by and not blow the horn at all until they reached the Hayward Park Station, while other trains start blowing their horn half a mile earlier. The blowing of horns is very inconsistent, and this is something I brought up at the Caltrain meeting, but the Caltrain reps did not answer my question. Sometimes during the day and morning, I can hear almost no horns at all. But every day, starting at 3 o'clock PM all the way until 12:30 a.m., there's constant horn noise. So there is complete inconsistency with the horn noise, which brings up the idea that the engineers are blowing the horns whenever they feel like it. Nothing to do with safety, since there's no work going on in these areas near the Hayward Park Station. The second thing is that I sent an email to city council the other day about my concern about the safe routes to school corridor bicycle improvements project on South Delaware between Bermuda and Saratoga Drives. I learned about this very randomly at a Fiesta Gardens meeting last Monday where I just happened to see a sign for it when I was taking a walk. The current plan is to reduce southbound Delaware Street between Bermuda and Saratoga to one lane. This will cause traffic bottlenecks, create safety hazards for drivers and bikers and pedestrians, and prevent drivers from safely leaving and entering their homes. It will also prevent Delaware Street residents from turning left onto northbound Delaware Street when leaving their homes, or from turning left into their driveway from northbound Delaware Street. And shockingly, the residents of my complex, along with the residents of all the other large apartment and condo complexes in this area, were not included in any of the planning meetings at all. I respectfully request that a meeting is held specifically for all the apartment buildings that are on this part of the street, and that invitations be mailed to every household in that area in English, Spanish, and Mandarin, so that all the residents can be included, since we are a very multilingual community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment on general public comment.
Thank you.
Mayor, you wanted me to address a couple of these items, or?
Sure, if you'd like. Thank you.
Okay. So first and foremost, on the golf VIP item, I have asked our Parks and Rec Director to look into updating our VIP program over at Poplar Creek. And so the hope and the goal is, is that we are remodeling right now the restaurant space out there at Poplar Creek. And so once we complete that this fall, my hope and goal is to make sure that we update this VIP program based upon what our public commenter has brought forward. So we're looking into that. So just wanted to address that. Secondly, just on the Quiet Zone item, that we are right now running circulation surveys, whether or not to close or keep open. East Bellevue, actually, is the street itself. And so looking at the circulation impacts of that neighborhood, that's what we're going to be bringing back to council. That's a decision that we're looking for. In addition, we have included the Hayward Park at-grade pedestrian crossing, which we believe is also part of the cause of what the public commenter was discussing or bringing up to the council this evening. So that will also be included as part of that project. So more to come on that. And then any public commenter can always email me at acogkunetss@cityofsanmateo.org. Happy to respond.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, we're going to move on to the next thing, which is new business. Item 10, the Housing Element Implementation Anti-Displacement and Tenant Protection Policies, while the presentation by Rachel Horst, Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. Welcome, Rachel.
And just as staff is pulling up the presentation, just a quick note regarding, city staff have prepared live interpretation services for our Spanish-speaking members of the audience. Our friend at the back of the audience is waving his hand. If you require assistance translating the meeting from English to Spanish, please see our friend, our interpreter. And Abby will translate what I just said.
Buenas tardes, gracias por estar aquí con nosotros esta noche. Si usted necesita ayuda para traducir en español, por favor, vaya para la mesa de atrás donde está Véctor, con la mano arriba. Gracias.
All right. So as they get set up, we're going to receive our presentation and provide direction on how to implement the tenant protection anti-displacement policies of the 23 to 2031 housing element.
Good evening, council members. I'm Rachel Horst, the Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. I'm joined by Jennifer Mora, our housing specialist. And as we work through getting the presentation up, I will just touch on the agenda items for this item. We're going to present a bit of background, specifically the housing element framework for this discussion this evening. We will present on staff's outreach and research. We will also provide a series of policy considerations in the lead up to the questions that we have for city council that we are seeking feedback on this evening. Want to make clear that rent control is not one of those considerations this evening. It is not part of the housing element framework, and it is not under consideration this evening. Then we will go over next steps as a last step. So I'm going to pass it to Jennifer now to go over the housing element background.
Thank you, Rachel. So for today, we're going to go over the housing element, which uses a three-piece framework. And we added two more goals under this framework. Tonight, we're focusing on policies related to goals number three and five, which is protection of current residents to prevent displacement and affirmatively furthering fair housing. So our first two goals, H3.4 and H5.4.1, is to expand tenant protections in local ordinance to extend measures of AB 1482 related to relocation, documentation, and right-to-return policy in eviction cases. The points below are specific actions that the city has committed to in an effort to meet these goals. The city has committed to extend provisions to require tenant relocation payments for no-fault evictions for those with tenure less than one year. We are considering on establishing tenant protection policies that include a requirement of documentation from landlords who use the substantial remodel exception to evict tenants and a right-to-return policy for tenants displaced from homes due to demolition or substantial remodels. Lastly, we have the commitment to amend the code to strengthen enforcement penalty structure to aid in protecting tenants from unsafe or substandard units. to aid in protecting tenants from unsafe or substandard units. And lastly, we are conducting community outreach. Okay, so for our third goal in the Housing Element, which is H3.6, the objective is to monitor rental rates, evictions, and tenant displacement citywide, specifically to research options and best practices for rental registry lists, including determining necessary financial and human resource needed to establish such program. As part of our research efforts, we collaborated with regional partners such as 21 Elements or A-BAG to develop ways to monitor rental rates, evictions, and displacement citywide, and also countywide to track trends and use this information to guide policy priorities. This will be the first time staff will introduce the information collected for this policy to City Council. And again, emphasizing rent control is not under consideration tonight. And we're also gonna go over MTC, which will, I'll pass it on to Rachel.
The Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC slash A-BAG, has a Transit Oriented Communities, or TOC, policy. And this is another part of the context for tonight's discussion. San Mateo has three TOCs, Transit Oriented Communities, centered around its Caltrain stations. And what MTC A-BAG would like is for jurisdictions with a TOC to comply with their TOC policy. This policy consists of planning standards and also housing policies that MTC has outlined. The objective of the TOC policy is to center housing and business development near key transit hubs, but it also includes anti-displacement and tenant protection policies and commercial stabilization policies. Now, the incentive for doing this is that a jurisdiction who meets the policy can qualify for One Bay Area Grant, or O-BAG. The O-BAG Grant, which is a very large grant of pass-through funding, federal funding for transportation, transportation improvements. So we're currently in O-BAG III. That's 750 million over three years that MTC has then granted out. And so in order to be a qualifying jurisdiction for this funding, the jurisdiction has to meet this policy standard. I'm passing it back to Jennifer now to go over prior efforts in this area.
Yeah, so this slide presents a brief overview of prior efforts that the city has conducted. So in 2016, Measure Q was a ballot measure that would have put a limit on rent increases and implemented a rental, a relocation assistance program. However, it did not pass by a 60 to 40% margin. And in 2019, the ordinance for relocation assistance was passed, and this addressed three methods of displacement, so due to unsafe or substandard units, demolition, or condo conversion. And for this ordinance, it was developed through a series of task force meetings. And lastly, in 2022, the staff went to council to potentially explore policies to strengthen AB1482. No specific policies were adopted as a result of this meeting, but staff did receive direction to keep researching on AB1482 and also collect more data. So besides on a policy level, the city has funded, or is currently funding three programs that addresses housing services. So we fund Project Sentinel, Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County, and Samaritan House. And in this fiscal year, we allocated $53,200 using CDBG funds. And last year, we were able to assist 177 individuals that live in San Mateo. And now I'll pass it on to Rachel, who will go over state law and city policies.
Thank you. This replicates what is in the report this evening, but we wanted to also present it here as the policy landscape that we're working in. The two state laws that are shown here are by no means a list of the laws, all laws that affect tenant landlord relations. These are two major pieces of legislation that directly pertain to the Housing Element policies that we are, are speaking about tonight. So the first is AB1482, or the Tenant Protection Act of 2019. This has several components, which we can go through quickly. It limits rent increases for covered units to the lower of Consumer Price Index plus 5% or 10%. There is a just cause for eviction provisions for covered tenancies. There is also a relocation assistance component for tenants who are evicted for a no-fault reason that provides one month of, of rent. And it is important to note that not all units are covered by AB1482, so it exempts buildings that are newer than 15 years, also single-family homes that are not owned by a corporation, and owner-occupied duplexes. SB 567 came later and added to AB1482's requirements regarding evictions from owner move-in or substantial rehab, and we will touch on that again later on. The other law here that is shown is SB 330, Housing Crisis Act of 2019. We're focusing just on the provision to replace demolished, protected rental and affordable housing units. This also, if there are demolished, protected units, requires relocation assistance and the right of first refusal. And then looking to existing city policies, as Jennifer mentioned, in 2019, an ordinance addressed these three areas. The first is Chapter 7.5. This is relocation assistance for tenants who are displaced due to city code enforcement activities. This could be temporary or permanent displacement. There is also a right of return to the unit in that, in this portion of the code. In Chapter 26.65.060, this covers units converted into condos. Tenants have the right to purchase, and there is a relocation assistance requirement. Finally, for Chapter 27.02.180, relocation assistance is required for tenants who are in demolished or converted units. So that is our, a policy landscape that we're working in. Pass it back to Jennifer to go over the outreach and research plan for these policies.
So here we have a timeline of our outreach and research plan. We've been working on this since August of 2024. We started off with an ongoing collaboration with 21 Elements, where we meet with San Mateo and Santa Clara County jurisdictions, who are also working on Housing Element implementation, specifically on anti-displacement goals. And we proceeded to meet with legal service providers, where we asked to get data on evictions and also hear more about eviction trends in San Mateo. And then followed by two community workshops that we hosted through the Community Relations Commission in November 2024, and we held another one in January of this year. And we hosted six focus group meetings, and this went from November through February. And this is still ongoing, but we are meeting with our jurisdictions for technical assistance. And our outreach mainly consisted of sending emails through listservs, through Constant Contact, also promoting the community workshops specifically through the city's homepage and social media posts, and also just by word of mouth as well. And since we hosted these meetings through the Community Relations Commission, we were able to highlight that these workshops were occurring through the listserv for the Community Relations Commission. And this is another overview of our outreach and research plan. So on the left, it's just highlighting our collaborations, again, with 21 Elements. But we've also been collaborating through the Community Planning Collaborative on an anti-displacement advisory committee, which also consists of San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties. On the right is a review of our sources that we were able to analyze for data. So specifically, the city business license tax records, CoStar, which is an online database on real estate data, available income and rent data, and also studies and data from legal service providers, including previously published study on evictions through Stanford Law School. And now we'll pass it on to Rachel, who will go over the key themes on the rental market.
Thank you. So from what we were able to access and, and hear through the various groups that we met with, is a key takeaway. The gap between incomes and rents is a known driver of displacement in San Mateo and in the wider Bay Area. In San Mateo, renters constitute 50%, just about half of San Mateo residents. And of that population, about 49% are in the lower-income category. That means that these households are earning 50 up to 80% of the area median income. So there is absolutely a disparity between what households and many renter households are earning and what the going rent is. At the same time, reviewing the data that we, we could access, particularly on CoStar, we found that average rents in older, and this often means also smaller buildings, is significantly lower than the market average. So on the bottom left, and this was the same chart in the report, it shows the average rent from the, from Zumper. This is the same source that was used in the Housing Element Needs Assessment. But we find that there really is a range and a diversity of housing types. And this is important to keep in mind, because not all rents are going to fall into exactly the, the categories that show, that are shown here. Looking at this chart, however, we can see the income that a household would need to afford that rent. And that means that the household is not spending more than 30% of their income on their rent compared to the area median income, and then the low-income household maximum for this year. And so as, as you increase in bedroom count, as the, as the units are, you know, become larger and the rents go up, there is a bigger gap between what a household can afford, can reasonably afford, and what the rent is. And this is why so many households, renter households, are cost burdened or spending more than 30%, more than 50% of their income on rent. We also found that we do not know the exact number of housing units in the city. But, but what we have, what we can see is that the housing stock in San Mateo does consist of many smaller buildings. So just shy of 80% of the available data on CoStar showed units up, or excuse me, buildings up to 10 units. And this is important because it doesn't mean that there aren't large multifamily complexes in the city. Of course, there are. But because there is such variation in ownership type, we should consider this when considering the types of policies that the city wishes to adopt, because they will impact different types of buildings and different types of ownership entities differently. Okay. Thank you for going to the next slide. Another area that we attempted to dive deeply into is evictions data. So as Jennifer mentioned, we met with legal service providers working in San Mateo and in San Mateo County to understand what the trends are. And they all reported an increase in their client caseloads comparing prior to COVID-19 to today. Now, the end of certain programs, like rental assistance programs or eviction moratoria that were in place during COVID, can explain some of this increase, but not all of this increase. So this has been a general trend upwards of, of the client caseload. At the same time, AB1482, it is reported, is associated with a decrease in no-cause evictions. Non-payment of rent is the main cause for evictions. Rents, and I'm sorry for the typo here, the rents and area median income continue to increase, but as we've said, many lower-income tenants' incomes remain static. We also need to point out, though, that whatever data we get from legal service providers or even from the courts, it doesn't cover the full spectrum of evictions. So there are what is called soft or functional evictions, where a tenant is displaced, but that case never makes it to court. It's, it's never dealt with as an eviction case. So the full extent of displacement is still unknown. And also, any feedback we got from legal aid providers is still only a portion of the total number of cases in San Mateo County. So fortunately, in February of this year, the Mills Legal Clinic at Stanford Law School released this analysis. They were attempting to identify what is the underlying basis for unlawful detainers in San Mateo County, looking at eviction cases through a court order. So they compared cases from 2019, pre-pandemic, to 2023. And their findings really confirmed what we heard from legal service providers. San Mateo was identified as one of the four jurisdictions that had more than 100 unlawful detainer cases in 2019 and 23 combined. Most of these cases were due to non-payment of rent. The study also noted that AB1482 has shown an apparent success in reducing no-cause evictions. The study also pointed out that there is a significant disparity between tenant and landlord representation in eviction cases that do go to court, however. And this is important, because when the tenant is not represented, there is certainly a higher likelihood of a poor outcome. So the, next slide, excuse me. The feedback we received from the public also dovetails with much of what we found when looking at the data. So pass it back to Jennifer to go over feedback from the community workshops.
Yeah, so as previously mentioned, we hosted two community workshops. So our first one was on November 20th of 2024. We hosted both workshops through the Community Relations Commission. And on the right is a series of feedback that we received from the public. It was mainly concerns about displacement or the cost of living and overcrowding, support for more protections against unsafe living conditions, support for improved tenant and landlord education, support for city rental assistance programs, and support or opposition to a rental registry program, and also expressed concerns about risk to mom-and-pop landlords from expanded tenant protection protections beyond AB1482. So this is also more feedback from our second community workshop. Comments still remain the same. However, there were more, there were much more feedback, for example, that insurance and maintenance expenses on rental properties are increasing, and it's a challenge for landlords. There is a consistency, there is a request of consistency of relocation assistance amount across city code provisions, a request of fairness of relocation assistance amount in substantial rehab scenarios, and also limiting no-fault evictions during the school year. Additionally, there is support for more education in current policies and resources. This is a comment that we have received in many conversations that we had with the public. And additionally, more restrictions and policies on landlords can add administrative burden. And lastly, there is support for just cause protections regardless of tenure, and support for rent registries to support policymaking. So again, these are the two workshops that we hosted through the Community Relations Commission. So we did do our outreach on these opportunities for public feedback through our listservs and also through social media and the city's website. And now I'll pass it on to Rachel, who would go over the key takeaways from our focus group meetings.
Thank you. As Jennifer mentioned, we had a series of what we called focus group meetings, but these were meetings with various types of stakeholders. We met with tenant and property owner groups. We met with nonprofit service providers, developers. We met with the general public. We met with individuals. We met with anyone who wished to meet on, on this topic. And we heard a lot of the same things in the focus group meetings that we heard at the community workshops. We also heard more detail, because we had more time to delve into the, the policies under consideration. So we heard that rent increases, a major concern about rent increases as a driver of displacement. We heard a lot of support for outreach and education on laws like AB1482 for both tenants and landlords. We heard a lot of concerns about escalating costs like insurance and utilities that are affecting landlords, as Jennifer mentioned. And we also heard a lot of concerns about evictions that are not counted, as I mentioned in a previous slide. in a previous slide. Now, on the policies that are specifically mentioned in in the housing element, we had a lot of feedback on those as well. There was support for relocation assistance and the right to return after a substantial rehab. And there were support, there was support for different variations of this policy. There was support for increasing the amount of assistance. AB 1482 provides for one month. There was support for providing three months of 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 rent to align with other city policies, so that consistency with other city policies. There was also support for means testing of recipient households, so for households to qualify for the relocation assistance. They would have to be perhaps up to eighty percent AMI, low income. We heard support for the right to return, but also specifically to return at a rent that is perhaps not equal to, but increased a certain amount from the prior rent and in the new newly constructed or rehabbed rehab unit. We heard much support and also opposition to rent registries, which we can, we will delve into in future slide for council discussion. And we also heard support for policies like Jennifer mentioned, for preventing evictions during the school year for families with school-aged children. And finally, we heard support all around for rental assistance, emergency rental assistance because nonpayment of rent, as we've mentioned, is the main driver, or excuse me, not main driver, main cause of known cause of evictions. Rental assistance program is something that many other cities have and could help to somewhat ameliorate the situation for tenants who are struggling to pay their rent. Now, what we have in this following slides follows what is in attachment to to the staff report. So we've broken it out just into the different policy areas. And we can run this however the mayor wishes to, but we can perhaps return to these slides as we're talking about each one to go into further detail about what staff has put into these columns. For now, I'm going to just go through each of them, and then we can go to the questions to council. So the first policy consideration area is relocation assistance, as we mentioned at the top of this presentation. The most straightforward application of what is in the housing element would be to extend the relocation assistance provided under AB 1482, which provides for one month of relocation assistance, to extend that to all tenants regardless of how long they've been in their units. Because currently, it only is available to tenants who are in their units twelve months or more. We will also note that housing, no, it's okay, Housing Element Policy H.34B, which is increased documentation requirements for substantial remodel evictions, was largely addressed by what is in SB 567. And we can get more into what the specific requirements are. Next. The the next, this next slide is replicating what is in attachment to. These are different alternatives of relocation assistance. But as I mentioned, that top line is the straightforward application of what's in the housing element. And the other two rows delve into the details or different variations of the policy, which we can go over subsequently. The right-to-return policy is the next policy in the Housing Element H.34B. This is a right to return for tenants who are displaced due to demolition or substantial remodels. The next policy, considerate, I should say, consideration is for strengthened enforcement, penalty structure for unsafe or substandard units. So the city already has a, an unsafe or substandard units policy. It's the tenant relocation ordinance that I mentioned earlier. But the strengthening of this penalty structure would have to do with tenants who are facing temporary displacement due to the code enforcement activities. When that is, when that becomes over a longer period of time, tenants incur significant costs that go beyond what the ordinance provides. And so that would be one way to strengthen this ordinance. And when we return to this policy option, we can go into further detail. Finally, the rent registry, this this area of policy consideration, we have multiple slides on, we can talk about what other cities are currently doing, they have or are considering a rent registry, what we heard from talking to those jurisdictions, some of the potential benefits and costs of the rent registry for the city council to consider. Finally, under other policy alternatives, we wanted to raise this with the city council. As I mentioned, there was a lot of support for emergency rental assistance. And and several jurisdictions have an emergency rental assistance program. And so while this is not part of the housing element framework, due to so many eviction cases being related to nonpayment of rent, due to the amount of support that it is, or the amount of feedback we've gotten from from the public on this, we wanted to also just raise it here. So with that, we have a series of questions for city council. They are following the housing element framework that we outlined at the beginning. Each one of these is a fairly substantive question. And so we pose these to to you now, to the council now, and again, would defer to the mayor on on how you may like to handle, how we run through this. Before we jumped into that, I will just mention next steps briefly, which is our last slide. Based on the direction we received tonight, this is a study session, we will begin getting to work on whether it's policy language or or code amendments or a program description, we'll get working on those items, and we will return to city council for approval for further detail on each of those individual items. We are working towards implementing all actions related to the housing element policies by the end of 2025. Okay, go back to the questions. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Before we come to council questions, we're going to open it up for public comment. And then when we circle back to ask questions, I'm sure we're going to want to reference all those slides. So thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Rachel, for your presentation. Mr. Clerk, how many public comments do we have in and out of chamber?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. So just some quick housekeeping items. If you have not submitted a request to speak slip, but you intend to speak on this item, please present that to me now. We will be announcing the last speaker. So after that time, we will not be accepting any additional requests to speak. So I'm seeing some come up. Thank you. And if you are participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. The same applies. We will be announcing the last speaker, and we will not be accepting any additional request to speak after that time. So in chambers, Mayor Newsom, we have a total of fifty-two requests to speak. And in our virtual environment, we have ten requests to speak. So we're looking at a total of sixty-two minutes.
Yes, so it'll be one, one minute per speaker. And folks, I know one minute is not a lot of time, but sixty-two minutes is a lot of time. So if we will probably take a recess about thirty minutes in. Additionally, if you hear something said, you don't have to say it again. So, you know, try to keep your 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 comments brief and try to put in new comments. If you've heard something said already three times, there's no need to repeat it. Just go to your items that haven't been said yet.
Thank you.
And then the last thing would be decorum. I think we have people on, you know, who are going to be one way or the other on this. So I just want to make sure that, again, there's no cheering, jeering, or clapping for public comment. We we want everyone to feel comfortable in speaking in public, and we don't want to put anyone, kind of have them be frozen out from speaking. So with that said, let's go ahead and begin public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. And just to reiterate that point regarding our rules of decorum, the city requires that you adhere to our rules of decorum as a means of participation in this public forum. Our motto in the city of San Mateo is give respect, get respect. So as Mayor Newsom mentioned, you may hear some things during public testimony that you may not agree with or you may agree strongly with. We ask you to please keep your reactions to that at a minimum. If you're unable to comply with our rules of decorum and you are disrespectful or showing a lack of courtesy to our public speakers, you may be escorted out of City Hall. So please, we ask that you respect our rules of decorum. Another housekeeping item, as as Mayor Newsom mentioned, we have a lot of requests to speak. When you, when I call your name, if you can please line up to my right, that will make sure that we get through all of the comments efficiently. We will start with our in-person speakers first. And as mentioned earlier, we will not be accepting any additional request to speak at this time. Our final speaker will be Carol Eldridge, in person. And in our virtual environment, our final speaker will be Lawrence Tognetti. So our first three speakers will be Michael Johnson, followed by Tom Blake and Jeff Lamont.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike Johnston, and I own and manage ten units in San Mateo. And I also own and manage many, many, many other units from Belmont, San Carlos, South San Francisco, Colma, Daly City, San Francisco. So I'm very familiar with rent laws and rent items. Please, no new laws in San Mateo. Please. What's happening with this new implementation of new ideas is you're ruining my retirement. I've been, I'm almost seventy years old. Everything I've made since I've been working at twelve years old has gone into buying rental properties in this area and providing housing for others. I consider myself to be a workforce housing provider. When my tenants have problems with paying the rent, I work with them to stay in the units and work out payment problems. Please, again, don't wipe out my retirement. Don't impose new laws on all the housing providers who provide thousands of units for people living in San Mateo.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tom Blake, followed by Jeff Lamont and Desiree Tang.
Good evening. My name is Tom Blake. I'm eighty-two years old. I've lived in this county since nineteen ninety-six. I have one duplex in this city. My three sons live in this city and their wives. The duplex is an important part of my retirement planning. I guess I'm pop in mom-and-pop. When the city model is something I've tried to live by, give respect, get respect. And I deal with my tenants that way, and they deal with me that way. It is absolutely the wrong direction to burden housing providers further. The city is under a mandate to create more housing and to encourage housing development. Additional bureaucratic restrictions like a registry really, really discourage it. It drives up the cost, and it's it's undoing burdensome. I urge you not to go further along this route. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next two speakers in chambers will be Jeff Lamont, followed by Desiree Tang.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jeff Lamont. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I'm a former housing provider. So there's a number of things I wanted to point out in my one minute. Why now? Renter regulations are not required, are not a required provision of the HDC. Other cities have certified housing elements without rental regulations. The deadline for submitting to HCD is not until 2031. So I've had some conversations with some of the city council members, and it has been, it it appears to me that the staff is trying to paint this as it's something that has to be approved. These housing element items that were put into the housing element, these these new laws, were put in by a previous council, none of whom are on the current dais. A couple of other things I wanted to point out is is that the city staff's report highlights that the number one cause of rental displacement is nonpayment of rent. I really think that the 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 focus should be towards programs and public funding that would help renters who face economic emergencies and not new regulations that is promoting.
Thank you. Our next individual speaker will be Desiree Tang.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing to for me to speak tonight. Oh, sorry. I'm a regular homeowner, and I'm requesting an in-depth review of current proposals, which to me has a huge negative impact on housing providers. I'm confused with State of California's intent to increase housing and provide for tenants. With the negative impact of financial burden, such as for my family, we have two incredible tenants that we love and have a great relationship. This creates a burden, and I don't know how we can sustain and keep going. And we want to be a part of the community and provide housing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. We will now move to our first organized presentation, which is from California Apartment Association, Rovi Lynn Antonio.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and City Council. My name is Rovi Antonio with California Apartment Association, CAA. Next slide. CAA is a trade association representing rental housing providers. CAA was founded because they needed, housing providers needed a voice at city halls, and that's why we are here today, to help amplify the voices of the housing providers and make sure they are not left out. Besides AB 1482, there are other laws that govern rental housing. Next slide. At a federal and state level, we have fair housing protections that make it illegal to discriminate based on these protected classes. Next slide. In California, every lease has two implied terms, covenant of quiet enjoyment and warranty of habitability. These are so serious that they are codified in state law. Next slide. Harassment and retaliation are illegal. Housing providers can't increase rent, evict, or make tenancy adjustments to retaliate from a renter's exercising their rights. This includes making calls about habitability or repairs. Next slide. Furthermore, a housing provider cannot take actions to enforce or intimidate renters from vacating the property by making threats to immigration. Next slide. Just this year alone, new laws are implemented on changes to the security deposits, credit reporting and screening criteria, and more. The new laws webinar is actually our top attended class every year because there are so many laws. Tonight was branded as a study session. However, a key component missing in your staff report are the results of our meeting with city staff and housing providers who cumulatively represented over forty-one hundred housing units. Next slide. The focus groups emphasized and attested that evictions are rare and occur at less than one percent of their properties. Most are due to nonpayment of rent, which your staff report also acknowledges as the number one reasons for evictions. The group shared that tenancy turnovers happen as a natural characteristic of rental housing. However, most of these turnover is tenant-initiated, meaning they left at their own will. Some of these reasons include job relocation, transition to homeownership, or changes in family size. Building-wide substantial renovations are also rare. If there is a significant renovations, they typically occur upon natural tenant turnover, which are tenants initiated. Data seen on commercially available rental analytics cites that there are ninety percent accurate. Some shared that these figures are actually higher in some sites because they don't always account for in-place rents and concessions. Next slide. The focus group also emphasized duty of care. They serve as peacekeepers. They have obligations to pursue complaints from neighbors about other neighbors. This is not harassment. On rental trends, the environment is increasingly regulatory and one-sided. More time is being spent deciphering these different layers of laws versus creating enjoyable living experiences. There are weaponizations of current laws and lack of due process for housing providers. Utility rates increase year over year. Some said insurance are up over thirty-five percent every year. And the business license tax in the city now captures all rentals, including single-family homes, which also add to the cost. And finally, there needs to be more education for all, which includes also renters coming in from out of state. Let's end up my PowerPoint. We ask the city to truly research the impact of your proposals. Have you fully assessed the efficacy of AB 1482 to make the determination that we need to strengthen it? What metrics are you using when your report indicates that eviction trends have decreased to AB 1482? Do you know if housing providers are recovering from COVID-19? The first two years of AB 1482 was during the pandemic, when rent payments were optional. Help us all understand the inconsistencies we are seeing. City staff says that these proposals are required by HCD, yet we don't see documentation. City staff say they want, the state wants the city to see rent registry, yet the state legislature rejected rent registries at least three times. City staff says the state wants just cause at day one, but this proposal was included during SB 567, but that was not part of the final bill. And on the right of return, the city says that the state wants to see that. And on the right of return, the city says that the state wants to see this. However, SB 567 also already took care of that. And lastly, why is staff pursuing these policies when your list of priorities and your next agenda item don't even include these specific proposals? We ask that the city takes a fair and impartial approach and stop the attack on housing providers. They are your partners. They provide much-needed rental housing for your residents. If non-payment of rent and lack of affordable housing inventory are the top causes of displacement in the city, then your focus should be exploring policies that address them. Targeted means testing approach using funds from the community, not creating more laws using private funds from housing providers. These are all counterproductive to the pro-housing designation that you want. You can't be pro-housing when you take an anti-housing provider approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will also be an organized presentation. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mitch Spiegel. This is from the San Mateo County Association of Realtors.
You ready? Go ahead. Thank you, City Council. Appreciate the time tonight and everyone else who came out. My name is Mitch Spiegel. I'm the Chair of Government Affairs for Sam Carr, San Mateo County Association of Realtors. I also served as co-chair for the Citizens Committee for Measure T, which added a good supply here in San Mateo. I also rent in District 5, Adam Lorraine's district. Next slide when you're ready. Why now? That's kind of our biggest question with this policy. AB 1482 just came into effect. We have yet to see how deep those different policies will go into our existing housing stock, especially with Mom and Pops. As the staff report said, San Mateo has tons of Mom and Pop owners. We have yet to see how this plays out. Next slide when you're ready. Resources and programs already exist. For statewide rent controls, city staff mentioned that there is no rent control being talked about tonight. We already have rent control. You don't need to talk about it anymore. We have statewide, it's been expanded. If we want help for low-income tenants to secure and retain housing, we have that. We have housing choice vouchers from Section 8. If we want support for tenants who experience job loss and avoid displacement, we have gap assistance, rental assistance funds, all programs that we can explore. If we want to provide tenants' ability to have housing stability, we can do down payment assistance, equity share, programs that have served San Mateo well. If we want to increase affordability and quality of rental housing, Measure T. As I just mentioned, we increase the supply of available housing. San Mateo voters, many of us on the, in the community today, and then also on the DAIS, supported Measure T. Next time. Increased cost and decreased affordability. At the very core is each and every one of these policies increases the cost to deliver new housing. I'm sure myself, I'm sure we have planning commissioners here, I'm sure we have advocates, I'm sure most of those students that stood up earlier today can attest, supply solves this issue. Only supply. You cannot restrict your way out of the situation that we're in. Every restriction, every step towards these restrictions hurts supply and hurts our community going forward. Rental prices and eviction controls are failed policies. They have not worked in Los Angeles, they have not worked in SF, they have not worked in New York. The costs, as you mentioned, get passed through the rents and are subsidized by good tenants, good housing providers. And it reduces supply. As mentioned before, it disincentivizes building, and it pushes housing providers to remove rental units from the market. The state of California and the city wants to see more houses built. We need more houses built. Every step taken to restrict that hurts that goal and hurts San Mateans. Next slide. The voters have spoken, and really, the community has spoken. As the city staff mentioned, 50% of people in San Mateo are renters. 60% of voters rejected Measure Q, which is rent control in San Mateo. Prop 33 rejected in every county in California. These are tenants that are saying these policies do not work, and these policies hurt our ability to deliver supply and increase affordability. And then yes to pro-housing policies. San Mateans are smart. They know that supply cures this problem. San Mateans, 60% of them, again, tenants, owners alike, voted to pass Measure T to increase supply and add much-needed housing. Next slide when you're ready. Our request to the City Council. First and foremost, please do not include additional rent regulations and rent restrictions in the city's housing element. We've done a great thing with Measure T. We've done a huge thing for the future of San Mateo to deliver the needed supply. Every step that you take towards restrictions kills that. All those kids that were up here before, when they look 10 and 15 years down, it's these decisions that compound over time to hurt the delivery of those units. Second, focus on expanding what is already working. City staff had a great slide about non-payment of rent being the number one issue. 143 unlawful detainers' evictions in a city of 100,000 people. We can solve this problem with gap funding. We can solve it for good. And don't increase the cost of housing with failed policies. These policies are proven to not exist and to not do what they're supposed to do. Next slide. For City Council, please ask city staff to provide documentation that rental regulations are required and must be done now. The city reserves the right to have transparency, that this is an absolute requirement when we're talking about such strong and powerful measures that we know kill housing productions, that hamstring us for our future. Second, please direct city staff and city attorney to provide options to amend or extend the housing element, considering that there are new laws on the table, considering the data that city staff has provided. If we can do this together, we have a great chance of solving this problem and sparing more housing for San Mateans. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our individual speakers. When I call your name, as mentioned earlier, please line up to my right. Our first speaker will be Marina Van Blomsteen, Lori Watanuki, and Bill Newell. Marina Van Blomsteen, followed by Lori Watanuki and Bill Newell.
Hi, my name is Marina Van Blomsteen, and I am going to repeat a couple of things that were just stated. We have voted Measure Q in San Mateo. We have voted for Proposition 33 in California. What is happening here is that you are trying to disenfranchise voters, and that is not the way that America needs to work. What we need to do is we need to encourage landlords to be in San Mateo, not threaten them, not threaten their livelihoods and make their lives more difficult. What we need to do is allow landlords to hold on to their properties. I would like to know how many Mom and Pop shops are wanting to leave because of these policies? How many Mom and Pop shops are being affected? And yes, it is a retirement plan for people, and you are going to ruin their retirement. There's other solutions, and the proposals being made by the staff are inadequate, have been shown not to work city after city after city. What you need to do is stop killing landlords and increase supply.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lori Watanuki, followed by Bill Newell and Brian Ponti.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and members of the City Council. My name is Lori Watanuki. As a small landlord providing affordable housing, rental housing in San Mateo, I'm opposed to more housing regulations. San Mateo has a shortage of affordable housing. Please do not add more regulations to make this more costly for the small housing providers. The primary cause, as mentioned this evening, of renter displacement is non-payment of rent. So the focus should be towards programs and funding to help renters who face these financial emergencies. Samaritan House helps with rental assistance with emergencies. I oppose these new laws. I oppose the rental registry and changing the tenancy to day one with increased relocation fees up to three months. Please focus on programs and funding that provide rental assistance to the renter in emergency situations, like Samaritan House. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Bill Newell, followed by Brian Ponti and Mark Rain.
Good evening, common council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Real briefly, I'm a 35-plus-year resident of San Mateo County. I'm a homeowner. But what I do know is that my son and his family cannot afford to live in San Mateo County. What I do know is San Mateo County is one of the most expensive counties in the United States to live in. What I do know is that majority of people in this county cannot afford to buy a home. What I do know is a high percentage of people can barely make rent to live in San Mateo County. Given all that, and given what I've heard tonight from your report and what I've heard support from your public, I would simply want to add that I would support the just cause policy, just cause protections from day one, extend that cost protection to all tenants from first day of tenancy. Secondly, I would strongly urge you to support prohibit no-fault evictions during the school years, as it affects families, teachers, and our students. Third, write a return after substantial remodels. Fourth, increase relocation payments and increase relocation payments at no-fault evictions due to substantial remodels. I'm a member of the San Mateo County Democracy for America, and I would refer you to our letter that we've submitted to you for further detail. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Ponti, followed by Mark Rain and Frank Vella.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before you. I ask that you not move forward with the expanded tenant protections that are being proposed to you this evening, as they are very one-sided and punitive. You've heard from staff about the cost pressures that housing providers are under. Our insurance costs, our maintenance costs are going through the roof. We're having to insure more of our losses ourselves because of shrinking coverage. Most housing providers agree that the cost of housing is vexing, and the problem needs to be resolved. To place the financial burden on resolving this problem on one set of constituents is both unfair and unwise. Instead, I ask that your staff stop this assault on housing providers and instead work with all stakeholders in the housing community to identify durable solutions that take into the needs of all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mark Rain, followed by Frank Vella and John Medina.
Good evening. My name is Mark Rain. My wife and I have owned a 10-unit apartment in San Mateo for over 30 years. We have tenants who have been there in excess of 15 years, some as long as 18. We own another building in San Mateo. We've owned that for about 12 years, and the turnover is rather low. We keep our rents low when we can, and we only raise them partially. These proposals are draconian. They are just unjust, and I simply think that they are, it's a stretch to create a solution that has already, that these problems already have solutions. There's absolutely no reason. We have state, federal, and local laws to protect the tenants. And the other thing is, is these laws will definitely, as been said before, will contribute to the building costs of new units. And I don't know if you, or any of you, really know what the vacancy rate of new units are. I know what my tenants and tell me.
Thank you. Your time is up. Our next speaker will be Frank Vella, followed by John Medina and Gary Isardi.
Hello, City Council. My name is Frank Vella. I am a current president of San Mateo County Association of Realtors, and I'm also a property provider, like many in this room. Staff's report, or description in tonight's report, said this was not rent control. This is all about rent control. And property owners, like the gentleman who just spoke, has been in the business of providing housing for years to many tenants, and I'm sure he's treated them well, did not want turnover, and probably worked with many who had difficulties during their tenancy. Property owners are subject to so many different costs and laws that it's almost unimaginable to want to buy rental housing. We should be supporting them, increasing housing, stopping new laws. There's plenty of rent control laws already on the books. We need to help housing providers, not discourage them.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John Medina, followed by Gary Isardi and Don Peterson.
Good evening, council members, mayor and staff. John Medina, San Mateo resident, District 3, Rob Newsom's district. As a community advocate for workers, housing, and who builds the housing, that's usually why I'm here. Essential workers such as teachers, essential workers and teachers, and the blue-collar and skilled construction workers that I help represent are critical to this community. We all know that housing is so important, and the costs are astronomical in this county. For many of these workers like myself, the only solution is for housing is to rent in this city, even though even a lot of my members and myself would make decent money. It's important to me that the rights of the homeowners and the property owners are protected as well. But I believe that the attention is in the details with anything, right? And I think that, you know, I want to support all these protections, and I hope that the city can help negotiate fair policies for the residents of this community.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gary Isardi, followed by Don Peterson and Martin Elliott.
Hi. I'm a small housing provider in San Mateo. I oppose these housing restrictions, and it's basic, a simple equation. It's going to cause financial instability among small housing providers. Overregulation, and what that's going to result in is reduced inventory, relevant inventory. Simple as that. Small housing providers represent a significant share of rental units, 46%. Rental buildings are aging significantly. 48% of San Mateo renter-occupied units are 50 to 90 years old. Aging rental buildings.
Could you take a step closer to the microphone?
Rentals, yeah. Give me a break there. Rental buildings are aging significantly. 48% of renter-occupied units are 50 to 90 years old. Aging rental buildings are causing significant maintenance costs among small business, small providers. Electric appliance conversion from gas to electric, electrical panels. Maintenance costs are exceeding the high inflation rate, and statewide insurance costs are skyrocketing due to the wildfire crisis. Rental housing proposals will work worse than negative cash flow. Most small providers have negative cash flow.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker will be Don Peterson, followed by Martin Elliott and Teresa Gebled.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, council members. I'm Don Peterson. I'm with Prometheus Real Estate Group. And as you know, we're a longtime housing provider and owner of rental housing. We've been around more than 50 years. We're headquartered here in San Mateo, and we have a long history here. We remain very active locally with real estate holdings and active development projects in the city currently. I'm speaking here this evening to express our strong opposition to the proposed changes to the city's rental housing policies. As an established housing provider, we are in a position to help the acute housing shortage and supply-demand imbalance and deliver much-needed housing protection to the city of San Mateo. Currently, we manage nearly 400 rental housing units in the city, serving families, seniors, and residents from all walks of life. And over the past 12 months, we have had zero no-fault eviction notices, a figure that underscores how rarely such decisions are made, at least speaking for our company. In our mind, existing state law already in place offers many of the tenant protections currently deliberated here tonight. Bottom line, we caution the City Council not to implement policy that will further discourage the production of new housing and renovation of current housing stock.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Martin Elliott, followed by Teresa Gebled and Tina Diode.
Hi, I'm Martin Elliott. I'm also one of the Mom and Pop landlords, and happy to be here tonight. I spent 32 odd years working for financial service companies and for big banks. And I'll tell you, I've seen many business cases, and I'm sorry to say tonight, but the numbers don't add up in the study that staff has done. I'll tell you straight up, I own a house, four-bedroom, three-bath, in San Mateo by Hillsdale High School. It is a beautiful house. I rented it for $4,500. I wish I could get $9,900 for it, but there's no way that's going to happen. I think those numbers were overstated. The other thing I would say is simply that a business case is not made by 141 unlawful detainers in a city that's probably got 10,000 to 20,000 rental units. It just doesn't make sense. The other thing is, is it about rent control? Of course it's about rent control. That is what the registry is all about. It will be a mess. You don't want to enter Pandora's box with that. The other thing that really upset me, to be very blunt, is the line that said increased cost to landlords. What about mortgages? What about taxes? They're not forgivable for me. I have to pay them. And I will tell you this, if I have to make an investment in my property.
Thank you.
Banks are going to reduce my income by 25%.
Our next speaker will be Teresa Gebled, followed by Tina Diode and Reverend Penny Nixon.
Hello. Good evening, council. My name is Teresa Gebler. I have rented houses in San Mateo off and on for over 20 years. I'd like to share a list of the organizations that have joined together in the coalition called Our Home San Mateo to advocate for stronger protections for renters in San Mateo. They are One San Mateo, the Housing Leadership Council, the San Mateo Climate Action Team, the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort, Housing Action Coalition. the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort, Housing Action Coalition, the Peninsula for Everyone, the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County, United Way Bay Area, the Latino Ministry at the Congregational Church of San Mateo. As you can see from all of this support, the community really cares about renters' issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tina Diode, followed by Reverend Penny Nixon and Fred Eckler.
City council members, members of the public, I'm Tina Doughty, president of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. We are a nonpartisan group founded to protect democracy and help people participate in governmental decisions that affect their lives. We advocate on public policy only after careful study and consensus. Our position on meeting basic needs calls for us to support programs and policies to prevent or reduce poverty and to promote self-sufficiency, including policies to promote a decent home and a suitable living environment for every American family. That is why this league endorses the policy recommendations on tenant protections developed by the Our Home San Mateo Coalition. We urge you to comply with the city's housing element's promise to update pertinent ordinances by adopting and implementing those recommendations.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Reverend Penny Nixon, followed by Fred Eckler and Sean Farrenbrook.
Good evening, council members. Reverend Dr. Penny Nixon, co-founder of, co-director of the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort. I was here last month where you enthusiastically voted to support A-housing and I felt the heart of our community at that moment. And tonight, what we are discussing and studying is at the heart of our community also, the character of our community. So I would ask you to consider, what voices do we listen to? What determines whose voice holds weight, holds sway, holds power? And at this time of instability and uncertainty and downright cruelty displayed by our current national administration, it is more important than ever that you, as leaders, listen to the voices of those that are farthest away from the center of power. And I ask you to do that. In our wealthy country, county, it is unconscionable that so many people are living on the edge. So I encourage you to deeply consider and support the policies brought forth by Our Home San Mateo. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Fred Eckler, followed by Sean Farrenbrook and Brendan Ayala.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and city council. Fred F. DeCary, by the way. Seems like staff is pretty hard-charging on this particular matter and understandably because the power that was just sort of referenced earlier, there's a lot of power and money behind the activist groups that are really pushing for this stuff and continue to push for this stuff year after year after year after year, even though the voters constantly push back on it. Regarding relocation fees, do we really have the exact numbers on what that would cost potentially the city, potentially in litigation? I'm not sure. Or is it to be funded as it is in San Francisco? And when costs go up, oh, well, let's just pass that on again as another assessment to property owners as basically a blank check, open book. Those are really good things, I think, or really important things that you should think about. The other thing is, as an earlier speaker said, just really quickly, the numbers don't add up. 100 over two years in a city of tens of thousands.
Our next speaker will be Sean Farrenbrook.
Doesn't make sense.
Sean Farrenbrook, followed by Brendan Ayala and Seema Patel.
City council, hello. My name is Sean Farrenbrook. Two years ago, I watched a really disgusting debacle here in the city council under the Mayor Poppin leadership. It's not Mayor Poppin, that's not who I'm saying. But Trina Pierce was brought before this council and I witnessed about 100 people speak to basically solve a tenant landlord issue. This kind of shows the quagmire you're getting ready to step into if you start going into this. Do you really want to get involved between these tenant landlord things on this? Are you going to set up an arbitration board that's legally accountable? Are you going to set up an appeals board when the he-said, she-said issues become the light? I don't think you want to get in this. I look into the, just one of the things that was brought up right now is the right of return if construction is not finished. Finished by when? I mean, it's very vague. You're going to have to go into the details of all these laws, really in detail. So just don't underestimate the amount of time that you're going to have to get into this to make it really solid. You don't want to act as a judiciary body. This is a legislative body and that's what you're going to have to do if you go down this path. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brendan Ayalo, followed by Seema Patel and John Love.
Hello, hello. Brendan Ayalo, lifelong San Mateo resident, raising a family here, also a housing provider. I'm not going to try to repeat anything as Mayor Newsom recommended, but one thing is, is supply is definitely the answer here, even short-term. Even, they say they want rental protections from day one. Every unit counts. When someone's waiting for permits and they decide to rent their house while they're waiting for permits, we need that person. When the person, someone in their family, say an elderly parent falls, makes a slip, ends up in a skilled nursing facility, then has to do rehabilitation, we want them to rent that house while that person's not in that house. When you add these things in right from the get-go, it takes from the very, very small, even smaller than a mom-and-pop landlord, just someone trying to get one unit in, it takes away from them. With that being said, 20 years ago, maybe a lease was 10 pages. Leases are nearly 100 pages long now. So for those mom-and-pop landlords, they don't know how to deal with all these laws. Even the really small person, applications are near 10 pages long now. We want as little restriction as possible for people to enter this market to lower the cost of simple supply and demand.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Seema Patel, followed by John Love and Mason Fong.
Hello. I currently serve on the Planning Commission, but am speaking on my own behalf as a resident. I am also a mom-and-pop landlord. In its Certified Housing Element, San Mateo commits to affirmably furthering fair housing as required by state law through actions and policies that include Policy H 5.2.4, Action 4.2, and Action 4.1, which establishes tenant protections by extending measures of AB 1482. There are three objectives to that action that have target timelines of 2024 and 2026. The city also commits to Policy H 3.6, monitoring rents, evictions, and tenant displacement through researching options and best practices for a rental registry list and collaborating with regional partners to develop ways to monitor rental rates, evictions, and displacement, target timelines 2024. I encourage the city council to follow through with these commitments to ensure that our housing element remains in compliance with the state so that we do not risk decertification and exposure to penalties like the builder's remedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John Love, followed by Mason Fong and Elaine Gilbrich.
Good evening, council. My name is John Love. I have been a resident and homeowner in San Mateo for 22 years. I'd like to speak on the subject of relocation assistance. One month of relocation assistance is not nearly enough. Costs for a tenant to relocate can easily climb to $10,000. I've heard it said that three months would not be a lot to ask landlords to pay, but why should tenants have to absorb these heavy costs when they're being forced to move through no fault of their own? Many cities require more than one month of relocation and even San Mateo recognizes that one month is not enough. We require three months of relocation for evictions connected with demolition, condo conversion, and red tag. This should be the requirement across the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mason Fong, followed by Elaine Gilbrich and Chris Eckert.
Good evening, council. I'm a tenant and a landlord, actually going through this entire process, flipping a duplex, have relocated tenants efficiently and give them two months' rent and everything. I still think these laws are unjustified. I judge every policymaking decision between three components: compliance with laws, cost efficiency, and actual impact. That's how I would tell you to look at these policies, is that in order, you have to prioritize your compliance with the housing element. I get it. But there are other policies that are more cost-efficient to a city facing a $15 million deficit that has to look at other models from neighboring cities that have not been efficient. Uniform policy that affects small business owners, small landlords disproportionately is not good policy. So if you're going to do anything, think about that. Lastly, there's a couple of solutions I put in my email. CDBG funding, you have $550,000. You can move around towards this. You can also do business license registry and actually require compliance training at the time of registry for landlords. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Elaine Gilbrich, followed by Chris Eckert and Colleen White.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom and city council. I think you all know that I'm the executive officer of San Mateo County Association of Realtors, but we had the opportunity to have Mitch Spiegel make a presentation. So I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my husband. We're mom-and-pop landlords and I want to make one point. Please do not consider increasing relocation payments. I think many people think landlords have buckets of money sitting around. I want to tell you, we don't and that would be very burdensome. So if I can make that one point, I will. And I do want to thank in the presentation for bringing up more education about the existing programs and existing laws. That was something I brought up in the study session, so I'm glad it got in there. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Eckert, followed by Colleen White and Amelia Mendez.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, city staff, the law of unintended consequences. I am a local realtor and I'm currently representing a son of a woman who recently passed away. When I met with his son, he told me that while his mother was in assisted living for five years, he did not rent out her unit. He could have. He did not rent it out. And I said, why did you, why did you not, and why did you give up the $5,000 a month that you could have gotten for your mother's unit? And he said, there's just too many restrictions on renting the property out. I didn't want to have to adhere to all those laws, so I decided to leave it vacant for five years. So the laws that we have in place prohibited him from helping pay for his mother's assisted living and it denied that unit from being able to be rented to somebody who could have used that. So if we want to solve the housing problem, we shouldn't put more restrictions on someone who wants to rent their property out that feels it's too burdensome. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Colleen White, followed by Amelia Mendez and John Mendez.
Hi, mayor and city council. Thank you for having me here. I'm Colleen White. I am a mom of the mom-and-pop landlords. We just acquired a duplex. We did not require the tenants that were there to move out. They are teachers in our community and we, with the high cost of the acquisition, we are subsidizing their rent so that they can stay here so that we didn't have to have them move out and do renovations and everything. And so I ask you, please don't put any more rules in place. I'm learning about a lot of them now that I have to be a part of. So I really think that we should spend more time figuring out what you need to be compliant for and not do this and really help us have people stay in this community that want to work here and be here and be here as a community. So thank you for this time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Amelia Mendez, followed by John Mendez and Kareem Saraf.
Many of the points that I wanted to make tonight have already been said, so I'm just going to keep it short. One of the things that I think you need to consider is the cost-benefit analysis that every landlord goes through when they think about doing a relocation. And it's not taken lightly. It's very expensive for us, for us to redo a one-bedroom apartment. It's often $25,000 to $30,000 a year. So it's not something that we do willy-nilly. And insisting that we do a right of return at the previous price, it doesn't make any sense. If that's something that's on the table, please don't do that. You want to keep the housing stock in San Mateo in good condition. You don't want to create slums. And so it's important that any landlord that invests in making the community better by improving housing also has the ability to recoup that expense at some point. It takes years. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mendez, followed by Kareem Saraf and Jen Kilroy.
Thank you for your time. My name is John Mendez. I want to start with just mentioning, 1482 was a grand bargain at the state level. There was a lot of resources and effort put into coming up with that solution, that resolution, that meeting of minds of various constituencies. When you ticker with 1482 on the fringes, you throw it out of balance and the law of unintended consequences will apply. I'll give you just one example. If you extended 1482 to day one, what does that do? In the renting process, bad actors do enter into the complexes. Every once in a while, you'll get a bad actor. It's usually the tenants that tell you, you've got a bad actor. Maybe they're trying to sell drugs. Maybe they're violent. In order to get them out, you've got to go through a process that's very onerous if you have to go through court. The one-year trial period allows you to help the community and set a safe community.
Thank you.
The law of unintended consequences.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kareem Saraf, followed by Jen Kilroy and Jerry Nugent.
I manage approximately 30 units in San Mateo, but according to staff's presentation, I fall under the property line. The housing policies we're discussing tonight inhibit the development of more housing. It will not help the city achieve its reno requirements as set out in the 2023 to 2031 housing element. In its presentation, staff did not provide any real statistical data. Here's a legitimate question: just how many displaced tenants are there in San Mateo right now? There has been a lot of mention and reference to AB 1482 due to COVID, and we heard it tonight several times. AB 1482 has not allowed, has not been allowed to matriculate. Let's focus on creating more housing and no new laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jen Kilroy, followed by Jerry Nugent and Rosa Maria Fonseca.
Good evening, council. I'm not a San Mateo landlord, but scaring all of these mom-and-pops out of the business scares me for all the renters in San Mateo. It sounds good on the surface, but the realities are quite different, much like 2020's Pop 19, which pitched to help seniors and disabled with housing and fund the firefighting fund when in fact it has hurt countless seniors disabled. And last I checked, the firefighters have yet to see a penny. I hope you'll consider the unintended consequences that will, you know, push more mom-and-pops out of the rental business, which is really the only truly affordable units. Relocation assistance doesn't mean much when the pool of reasonable units continues to die off because of continual layers of policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jerry Nugent, followed by Maria, sorry, excuse me, Rosa Maria Fonseca and Amelia Navarro. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker will be Rosa. Rosa will be receiving interpreter assistance, so we'll have two minutes.
Mi nombre es Rosa Maria Fonseca. Viví por ocho años en 320 Monte Diablo y tuve un desalojo injusto en julio del año Me dijeron en el último de este mes tienes que desalojar. Y yo le dije pero como voy a desalojar? Dicen ya no puedes estar aquí. Este vamos a sacar todo lo del cuarto. Cuando lo sacaron, me dijo ya no puedes entrar. Le dije si yo tengo pagado mi renta, como no voy a pagar? Entonces si me sacas afuera, pues entonces mi cuarto es el patio y me quedé a dormir en el patio. Pero me dijo que ya no quería que yo estuviera allí, que porque no quería problemas y en realidad tengo, hace dos años mataron a mi co en San Francisco, tuve negación de la policía, no me apoyó, me dijo que mi hijo ya estaba muerto, que andaba investigando. Entonces realmente yo estaba un caos en mi cabeza. Me pasa el desalojo injusto. Yo fui a pedir ayuda a la oficina de.
It took 45 seconds.
Oh, okay. La samaritana, el muchacho me dijo que yo no hiciera nada.
Más bien voy a dar mi traducción de lo que te iba a decir.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Maria Fonseca and I've lived here for eight years at 320 Monte Diablo and I had an unfair eviction last year. They told me that I had to leave and I couldn't be there anymore and they took all my things out of the room and they told me that I could not come back. And I told them, but I paid my rent and so how can I not come back if I paid my rent? So I ended up staying in the patio and they said, no, you cannot be here anymore.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Imelda Navarro, followed by Lauren Matthews and George Jerome.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Imelda Navarro and I live in District Three. My neighborhood was flooded in December 31st, 2020. My neighborhood was flooded in December 31st, 2022. We witnessed great property and personal loss, but what we never saw was our council member from District 3. You turned your back on us when we were in distress. Yet, that flood and that neglect were nothing compared to what my people are going through. Now, we targeted deportations, support system from school meals, Medicaid, and food stamps all being taken away from us, the most in need of these programs. So my community is demanding that the council pass these protections. We have been waiting for years for the city to do anything to help us enough of turning your back on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lauren Matthews, followed by George Garam and Ricardo Sosedo.
My name is Lauren Matthews, and I'm here as a representative of our home San Mateo. In recent years, we've all become more aware of the role that essential workers play in our community. The reason they're called essential is because they're crucial to our community, providing services that are necessary for daily life, healthcare, food production, transportation, emergency response. They ensure that the community can continue to operate even during times of crisis like pandemics or natural disasters. Where would we be without them? In San Mateo, many of these essential workers are renters. For the health of our community, we need to make every effort to keep them here. I encourage you to adopt the five policies set forth by our home San Mateo that are intended to limit evictions and increase housing security for renters in San Mateo.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be George Gergam, followed by Ricardo Sosedo and Robert Whitehair.
Hello, everybody here. I don't have anything to say because we're not going to talk about rent control today. But regardless, you know, I would like to mention that eviction is a very sensitive situation for anybody, and you put that person in misery because it's an ugly, ugly social mark. If you're not going to look for a rent later, I have never been evicted, but I know many cases. And I hear from lawyers, you know, criminal lawyers saying that it's better for a person that have been a choplifter, find a job that somebody have been evicted, find a new place to live, which is a nightmare really. And the last thing I want to mention in this 60 seconds is that concerning to a realtor was talking before here, you know, we cannot rely, you know, on house aid for help, you know, in rent control. Real estate is about money, definitely about money. And house aid is an agency, you know, that we're living resources.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ricardo Sosedo, followed by Robert Whitehair and Terry Whitehair.
Buenas noches. ¿Cómo están ustedes? ¿Están bien? My name is Ricardo Sosedo. I'm a tenant and resident here in San Mateo. I'm on assisted living, and also I pay rent that is way too high. Every day, I go to our local church with the help of Samaritan House to feed myself because at the end of the month, I go one week without eating. I'm all in favor for this registry for landlords. I don't see why they are afraid. Us tenants are never afraid when they do background checks on us. So I'd like for you guys to adopt that policy and to keep it open and also educate us. We are just very, very honest tenants, and we are not actors. Thank you very much. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Robert Whitehair, followed by Terry Whitehair and John Ebner.
Mr. Clerk, after those three speakers, we'll be taking a 10-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, thank you for the great hard work you're putting into this and taking on this very difficult issue. We've been homeowners in San Mateo for the last 43 years. 10 of those years, we were both landlords and tenants in both New York and here in San Mateo. What Penny Nixon said about the power dynamic is so true. The landlords have a power over the tenants, and we found that out sort of the hard way for ourselves. But there is a very short supply of impartial data about rents and evictions, especially on the grandeur level that would be most helpful in revealing what's going on in order to have a good public dialogue and set good policy. A rental registry will help that. It'll help with the soft and functional kinds of evictions that we saw in both New York and here. It'll help you understand what that's all about. A rental registry will move us into the light. Please adopt a rental registry. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Terry Whitehair, and our final speaker before the recess will be John Ebner.
Mr. Mayor and City Council and staff, thank you for the opportunity. And I've been married to Robert for over 54 years, and we've been residents supporting three years. And I agree with all of the policies that's set forward with our home San Mateo and especially the rental registry. But I want to give you the voice of a tenant. During the city council race, I was doing canvassing and knocked on the door of an apartment, and a young woman answered the door. And she said, I've been in this studio apartment for over 10 years, and now they've raised the rent to $2,000. And I'm a good teacher, and I teach here, and I teach my students. I'm a really good teacher. And she started to cry. And she says, please tell people what the situation is. So I'm giving you her voice tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker before the recess will be John Ebner.
Good evening, Council. The obligation to supply data to the council on the financial and human resources necessary to establish a rental registry has not been met. Per staff, the reference costs only give the council a sense of what a registry entails. That does not meet the obligation to HCD. So with the lack of local, pertinent, and city-specific data to make an informed decision, I would suggest that you approve the rental registry or send it back to staff for further investigation. Getting this item right would appear to be very prudent considering the recent policy disagreements between the city and HCD. High costs, degrees of difficulty, and the burden on staff are always a focus while addressing renters' issues. Yet funds for Measure K, CDBG, and the housing set aside, among others, are options to study and implement anti-displacement measures. We must quit looking at renters as expendable collateral damage.
Thank you.
Solutions are needed, not excuses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, that takes us through to recess.
All right.
Protections to support renters and their families. And I'm sorry, I have a cold, so sometimes it's difficult for me. But thank you for giving me this opportunity and have a great evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Reverend Alvaro Param, followed by Laura Hines and Lanajin.
Good evening. Based on staff report, it seemed like every proposal for tenants was deemed too expensive or too high. Yet other cities have made it work. Does it mean really that renters in San Mateo aren't worth of the investment? That would be disturbing. Fifty thousand people, forty-nine percent of the city, are renters. Here in the city and many in vulnerable conditions. And those are the voices we're uplifting. These are the voices we're amplifying with our proposals and with our campaign and with our coalition. Their voices. And this, dear council members, is the opportunity for you to consistently demonstrate the ethics of public service and tenants and that human right of decent housing and tenants dignity are not commodities.
Our next speaker will be Laura Hines, followed by Lanajin Vecioni and Jessica Vaqueta.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Yes. If I'm not breaking laws, I don't have to worry about any new ones. If I'm not a fraudster, an additional fraud law doesn't bother me. These laws that are in place, they, they aren't fixalls. I believe housing is a human right. These are just sensible, humane things to leave in the playing field. And if you're so good to your renters and you've kept your renters for ten years and you'd never kick anybody out for no reason and no, you're just not bringing them back because we know they want to double, triple the rent. So unless you don't have, unless you're such a good renter landlord, then you wouldn't worry about this. And renters, everything we do is visible.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lanajin Vecioni. Is Lanajin with us? No. Jessica, followed by Chris Worthman.
Good evening. I'm, my name is Jessica Vaqueta and I am the Senior Minister of the Congregational Church in San Mateo, as well as a proud renter in our city. I hope this process leads to the council making meaningful changes with the real potential to keep San Mateo renters in our homes. Renters, as you know, make up half the population of San Mateo and we contribute immensely to this community. We care for our children, support our elders, drive our ambulances and dispatch our police. We want to continue living here. As elected custodians of the full community, including the fifty percent of us who are renters, I urge you to recognize the unrelenting pressures that many of us face every day, chief among them, the struggle for affordable housing. Please give renters the consideration we deserve and adopt the proposals set forth by the Our Home San Mateo Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Chris Worthman, followed by Paola Aralano Casales and Ted McKinnon.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Chris Worthman. I'm a longtime member of Congregational Church of San Mateo. I work at a Bay Area university, developing housing for faculty and staff. This housing is critical to the university's ability to recruit and retain its workforce. Housing is just as critical for San Mateo, to maintain its workforce sustainably. I also own small rental properties. I am a housing provider. And I respectfully disagree and do not consider the renter protections proposed to be radical impositions on landlords, but rather to put more balance and certainty in the commitments between renters and landlords, commitments they make to each other. We've learned from the federal government how.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Paola Araleno Casales, followed by Ted McKinnon and Tina Wong.
Hello, council. Paola, I'm a housing leadership council staff who is part of the Our Home San Mateo Coalition. As someone who grew up in working class immigrant family, I know what it's like to feel unstable in housing, subletting rooms to strangers, dealing with unadatiable conditions due to landlord negligence and facing harassment are not uncommon for families like mine. And even then, stability was never guaranteed. And that's why I was surprised to see the staff report remain silent on one of the most basic protections renters deserve, and that's just cause from day one. Without it, renters can be evicted in their first year for no reason at all, just for requesting repairs or simply because of who they are and what they believe. I've seen families push for less and I want to be clear that when a tenant is truly a fault, landlords can still evict. That never changes. What just cause does is protect people from being displaced unfairly. So we at Our Home San Mateo believe that there should always be a just cause for eviction. Everyone deserves to feel safe and rooted in their home from the very first day.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ted McKinnon, followed by Tina Wong and Reina.
Good evening, council. Ted McKinnon, 25-year resident of San Mateo. AB 1482 created a set of no-fault reasons for which a landlord is entitled to evict. Substantial remodel was one of them. Tenants can be evicted, but they need to be given the right to return. This is one of the five policies called for by Our Home San Mateo. Now, the staff report says that this would be hard to administer, but if implemented in conjunction with a rental registry, this would not be the case. Further, Our Home San Mateo calls for a cap on the increase in rent to the returning tenants. Only if tenants are protected against an exorbitant increase, would it be reasonable to think they could return home? And capping the new, the new rent could discourage gentrification and help us hang on to our precious supply of modestly priced housing. Preservation is a big subject these days. This would help with that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tina Wong, followed by Reina and Michael Reagan.
Thank you, councilman. This is Tina Wong, Better Housing Policy dot org co-founder and also property manager. I've been in the business for 28 years and I've never evicted anyone for no reason. I evicted two. One is professional tenants and another one is a drug peddler. So I'm trying to say if you impose the law, we all know the cost of living gone up so high. And garbage company, water, sewer, went up eight percent, nine percent annually. And then insurance went up hundred to two hundred percent. It becomes on the shoulders of and burdens of the housing providers. Why is it okay? It's not fair. And when we don't have a right, in California, we all know that and you all know that. Okay? If someone even said that we should pay a relocation fee for somebody that's living there for less than one year, why would that make sense?
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Reina, followed by Michael Reagan and Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Reina Gonzalez. I've been living in San Mateo for 22 years and in the same apartment. I'm here tonight representing the community, the working class, gardeners, nannies, cleaners and more. People who don't have voices, who are scared to ask the landlord to fix the fridge, the stove, the oven, even to change carpet. Why? Because they take retaliation. You ask for the landlords to, it's better to give eviction letters and people who give them more money, to people who give them more money. The poor is getting poorer and the rich are getting richer. Please, please, I encourage you to, to take action on this discrimination. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Reagan, followed by Rick Bonilla and Carol Eldridge.
Good evening. I think there's not a person in this room that, that doesn't want tenants' rights. But I believe that this, this, these policies are ill, that they should not be, that you should not implement them. I've worked in this business for about 50 years and I've seen the good, bad, the ugly of landlords and tenants. But the majority of small mom and pop landlords are incredible people that have to put up with a lot. And over the years, I've seen so many rules made to support tenant rights, but very few rules to support the landlords and what they have to go through. If, if we're forcing them to get out of it and sell their buildings, you will have nothing but problems when you start letting Essex and Pometheus and those kind of companies take over and then you will have problems, I guarantee you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Bonilla, followed by Carol Eldridge.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rick Bonilla. Tonight, I ask you to think about the mom and pop renters. The hardworking families who are barely holding on in San Mateo. And let me get my glasses out. I agree with something Mr. Spiegel said earlier, that promised future of Measure T abundant housing will be great if we ever get there. But I know one thing for sure, it's a ways off. Okay? And we need a bridge now because people are suffering right now. Families are having serious issues and our economy, contrary to what some people think, is not getting any better. I'm sorry. What I'm seeing is it's getting more difficult for people who don't have the means to make things better for themselves. So I ask that, that we ignore, we can't, we can't ignore these situations any longer. I'm sorry, I'm skipping a bunch of my speech. It's time that this measured.
Thank you.
Action strongly urge you to support regional measures. You know what I mean? Thanks.
Our final speaker in person will be Carol Eldridge.
I'm not getting paid for these comments. Good evening. The one concrete committee, commitment the city made in its housing element where tenant protections were concerned was to extend relocation assistance to the first year of tenancy. But the staff report suggests the idea of prorating this, giving tenants a fraction of one month's rent based on how many months they've been there. This turns it into pennies. These are no-fault evictions where the tenants have done nothing wrong. We are going to require that they be given pennies? When we know how high the costs of relocation are? We can't do that. Not only would this trivialize the one commitment that the city made to expanding renter protections, it would be a terrible slap in the face to renters. And I want to say that a previous commenter said that we think that mom and pop landlords have buckets of money. And so we can't increase relocation benefits, but somebody has to absorb the cost. Why should renters have to absorb the cost? They don't have buckets of money either.
Thank you. Your time is up. Moving to our virtual environment, our first speaker will be Stephanie Reyes. Stephanie, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I live in the Bay Meadows neighborhood here in San Mateo and because of an abundance, good evening, mayor in San Mateo, mayor and council members. I live in the Bay Meadows neighborhood here in San Mateo. Because of an abundance of good fortune in my life, I am lucky enough to not only own my own home, but also own a few more housing units that I rent out. As both a resident and a landlord, I strongly support the tenant protection measures put forward by Our Home San Mateo. Yes, that's right, I said support. It is incredibly hard to be a renter in San Mateo. It's increasingly hard to be a renter anywhere. As a landlord, I would be more than happy to implement these common sense tenant protections if it means my neighbors who are renters will have more security and be able to remain part of our community. Please support the tenant protection measures put forward by Our Home San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Amanda Chang. Amanda, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Chang. I was born and raised in San Mateo County, where I volunteered at Shelter Network, which is now Life Moves through middle and high school, which inspired me to pursue a career in advancing anti-displacement and tenant protection policies at Urban Habitat. As staff explained earlier, San Mateo has multiple TOC areas, making it eligible for the next round of OABAG funding that will begin next year and make available hundreds of millions of dollars that the city relies on to maintain its public transit, highways and roads. In pursuit of compliance with the TOC policy, San Mateo has actually already received over $600,000 in grant funding from MTC to implement zoning changes and housing production policy development. However, it does not guarantee compliance, as TOC areas are also required to adopt at least two tenant protection policies that go beyond state law. To help jurisdictions pass effective tenant protections, MTC is rolling out model ordinances on their website under jurisdictional staff resources from now until May for a number of the policies staff has recommended, including just cause, the right to return and tenant relocation assistance. These model ordinances can help reduce staff time and make sure the city is staying in step with other cities and counties in the Bay Area to meet its commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Robert Holland. Robert, please unmute your mic.
My name is actually Suzanne Moore. I'm a sitting board member for healthcare for the homeless and farm workers program and I speak for myself this evening. Eviction remains one of the greatest barriers to finding another home. Therefore, preventing evictions is an obvious way to best assist tenants and interrupt the homelessness pipeline. Here are some, how some communities chose to decrease evictions. They adopted ordinances that extend just cause for eviction from day one. They ban junk fees and leases and halt that path to eviction for failure pay. And they require landlords to provide access to tenant legal aid as they serve an eviction. Tenants who have an attorney present in eviction court are more likely to stay housed. I'm grateful to landlords who provide safe, affordable housing for our neighbors. Our tenants are an important part of our community and we as a community can adopt ordinances that guide and protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be call-in speaker with the number ending 166. Please unmute your mic. Go ahead caller and with the number ending in 166. We're unable to hear you. We'll move on to the next speaker. Paul K., Paul, please go ahead and unmute your mic. Go ahead, Paul K.
Unmute. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening. My name is Paul. I'm a 20-year resident of San Mateo. I own a fourplex here in San Mateo and my rents are below average for the city. I want to echo a very important point. If we want more affordable rental housing, we need more supply of rental housing. I want to add two points I haven't heard covered so far. One is that it's surprisingly common for landlords to report big losses due to tenants who refuse to pay rent. The owners, the people who used to own the fourplex next door, they rented at far below market and due to non-payers, lost over $100,000 before selling their property. Number two is that landlords of single-family homes and duplexes can readily choose to exit the rental market by selling their properties. They can sell and when they do, there's a good chance those, those units are gone. So let's think about how to encourage more owners to provide rental property rather than chasing them away.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jonathan Stone.
Good evening, mayor, newsmen, council members. I'm Jonathan Stone with Prometheus Real Estate Group. I want to convey a strong concern for the items under review. Policies to address these topics are already in place. New mandates, such as those being considered in the staff report, which increase compliance burdens and costs will not encourage the creation of more housing. They will have the opposite effect, discouraging investment, reducing supply and increasing housing costs. We hope you will consider continuing outreach to all stakeholders so that these and other considerations can be discussed further. Thank you for your time on this matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gina Papin. Gina, please unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. My name is Gina Papin. I am the MTC representative for all 20 cities in San Mateo County. I would like to state that the city of San Mateo is already in substantial compliance with the TOC policy established. with the TOC policy established by MTC as far as affordable housing protection policies go, and be happy to work with the city staff in order to rectify or any misunderstanding that might exist presently. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Krista Hansen. Krista, please unmute your mic.
Uh, yes. Um, my name is Krista Hansen, and I am a member of the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort. Our home San Mateo is advocating for a prohibition on no-fault evictions while the tenants' childrens are in school. The damage caused to children by an eviction is well-known. It has been documented extensively by the Princeton Eviction Lab. When families are evicted, children are often forced to change schools. As a result, their ties to existing support networks, teachers, neighbors, friends are severed, uprooting them from the relationships that helped to stabilize their young lives. Not surprisingly, eviction is correlated with a drop in school performance and a rise in the potential for adolescent crime. By prohibiting no-fault evictions during the school year, as the city of Concord does, these traumatic impacts can be averted. Please put this policy into place and protect teachers from being evicted during the school year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for all of your comments tonight. So what we're going to do next is move on to questions from the council, and then we're going to have a slide come up that'll show us the different questions that we'll be answering, and we'll go one by one through them. So to start off, does anyone have any questions?
I have some comments.
Okay, we'll start there.
Just to confirm, so we're gonna, um, provide comments or questions, and then one, go through each question. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Perfect. Um, well, thank you to the community for coming out, and, uh, thank you to city staff by preparing an excellent report. I felt it was very thorough and informative, and I appreciate the fact that everyone on staff is working hard to give us details we need to make informed decisions. Uh, my biggest takeaway from the report is that one of the three Ps in the report, production, preservation, and protection, is by far the most important, and that P is production. And I think going forward, we should be focused on production as much as possible. The production of more housing in San Mateo requires us to balance the interests of residents with developers and property owners. If we want more production in the city, we need to be a city that encourages capital investment in new housing. For that reason, as I read through tonight's proposals, there are some items that I think could make sense, but others that could backfire and run counter to encouraging the development of more housing, more new housing in San Mateo, excuse me. In particular, I think a rental registry is a perfect example of a policy that may sound nice in theory, but antagonizes property owners and developers. It discourages investment in our community, and there is evidence from other communities like Half Moon Bay that these policies are being rolled back. So, um, I'll start with addressing item number one. It's up. Um, and again, I just want to say that, you know, in my view, we need to have a balanced approach. So, um, I would be supportive of relocation benefits, but I would like to hear from my council colleagues on length of time and cost. So I'll start there.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Thank you also to staff and to everybody in the community who came out and who's been so involved in this for many, many years, not just tonight. And for really engaging. And I think you understand that we all in council understand how important this is and are trying to listen and hear and react. So a couple of questions that I would love to direct to staff before getting into comments. Um, when we were doing our community outreach about how often did we ask our focus groups in particular, how often evictions happened due to substantial remodel, owner move-in, or taking the unit off the market? I know we've got data from third parties, but did we talk about that during community outreach and focus groups?
Um, we did discuss it with the legal service providers that we met with, um, which we, as we mentioned, that was the, one of the first steps that we took. Um, and, um, we didn't have, the difficulty with substantial rehab evictions is that they don't always end up in the, the hands of a legal service provider. They don't always lead to the tenant seeking assistance. So we don't know the exact number. It's the same answer that we'll give for evictions in general. But we did, we did hear that, um, the existence of AB 1482 was helpful. There was a marked difference, um, from the time before AB 1482 was put into place and the time after. And, um, so generally speaking, um, the, the trend has been to, to reduce the number of evictions that at least those, again, those situations that even make it to the legal service providers, um, they, they saw that AB 1482 made a difference there. Could, could it be improved? And it, it was partially improved, um, by S, um, SB 567. I may be butchering the name of
I think you got it right.
the law number. Um, yes, which enhanced that somewhat, and it possibly could be improved on further. But, so generally speaking, right? But we don't have the exact number.
Okay. And we didn't talk to the, let's say, the landlord specifically asking or?
Uh, when we met with, um, for example, California Apartment Association, as was mentioned in the presentation, um, there, I don't recall discussing a specific number, but the, that it was, that it was unusual or rare to do it, um, uh, when, um, there is a tenant in a unit that many, that at least of those that we spoke with in the focus group, I recall that, um, they said they would generally wait until their unit turnover to do rehab. But again, no number associated with that, it was just the, the general theme.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And, uh, you know, we talked, in the report, you talked about cities with rental registries, and a number of them were sort of in planning perspective, they weren't in mode. So, uh, how can you help us understand actual costs over time versus budgeted costs? Because given our current financial situation, obviously, that's an issue.
Yes. Um, we did provide in the report, and I, we also have the list here of jurisdictions that have either recently instituted or, um, are in the process, as you say. Um, and the costs are, are, are varied. Um, and this is attributed to various factors, the, the size of the jurisdiction, the, the platform that they're using, um, the, um, amount of staff time that is required to implement the, um, the registry. So, uh, these are just a restatement of what is in the report, but we looked at East Palo Alto, we looked at Concord, Palo Alto, um, and Half Moon Bay. And, um, the, the numbers really ranged. East Palo Alto had 150,000 for setup of the, of the program, and 150,000 was budgeted moving forward annually for the program. Now, East Palo Alto has, uh, rent stabilization in, in, um, already in existence. Um, they already have some, an existing platform that they use, um, and so they're building on that. Half Moon Bay, they, um, budgeted 30,000 annually for their software. They also have a significant amount of staffing costs, um, which we did not get the, the figure for, but they have one, um, full-time temporary staff and one, um, 0.5 or half-time, full-time staff working on it. Concord has a annual, uh, cost of 81,000. Um, Palo Alto budgeted 443,000 for four years, or about 110,000 per year. So you can see, you know, 150,000, 100,000, 80,000. Um, I, I will say though, that there is, um, these, these costs can be offset with a cost recovery model. So, so, you know, Half Moon Bay is charging for registration, or there's a citation, uh, policy. Um, so maybe that's not rolled out in the first year, but is rolled out in subsequent years so that there is some revenue coming in to support the program. So it's not as if these programs are being fully, you know, independently funded by the city's general fund.
Right. And the cost recovery is paid by the, the housing provider?
Non-compliant, yes.
Okay. Uh, then, is it possible, we, you spoke a lot and a number of people did tonight about the Stanford Law School data that was collected. Is it possible to disaggregate that data or work with the superior court to do it? Because it seems like those 141 cases would have a lot of learning in terms of what happened, who they were, how it happened. Cause I'm, I'm struggling with the lack of specific data. And this would seem to be a good place to get some of it.
Um, well, the Stanford Law School study was, um, yes, it was based off of court records that, that law clinic was able to obtain. Um, I think they worked in cooperation with, um, Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. Um, so I do not want to promise that staff can, uh, get, uh, into the same level of detail or have access to exactly those, uh, data. However, um, staff can, first of all, we should look back in the report, but also we, we can communicate with them to see if there is, um, additional drilling down that we could do specifically for San Mateo.
Right. I think that would be really helpful. And then my last question, uh, in terms, and once again, it's over time. For cities that do the emergency rental assistance, uh, does it, is there, are there trends in terms of levels or is every city different? You know, how should we be thinking about if we wanted to provide this? How do we try and box it into a, a number we can put in the budget?
Uh, well, we can compare it to, uh, maybe similarly sized jurisdictions. Um, we, we did look at, um, the jurisdictions in the county that have a, um, that are currently doing this with an emergency assistance fund. There was actually some collaboration between the jurisdictions where, um, uh, we all, we kind of polled ourselves to see who was currently, uh, who currently had a program. So for example, um, you know, South San Francisco and Redwood City, they have, they have emergency rental assistance, I believe, and Jennifer might be able to back me up on this. South San Francisco is 150,000 per year, is that correct? Redwood City is, is at 120,000. Um, and, um, Daly City, 50,000. So it kind of varies based on the jurisdiction. But if we're looking at, you know, like South San Francisco or, or Redwood City, you know, 100, 150,000. Um, and, um, I don't, I don't think generally that the cities have trouble, um, expending Yeah. those funds.
Yeah.
Um, but that just gives an idea of what they're, what they're putting aside every year.
Okay. Thank you. Now, those are my questions. Are we going, I'm not quite sure how we're doing this. Do we go down the, the various questions? Just the first one?
Let's, let's just get through everybody's questions first. Number
Okay, great. Then thank you very much.
Who wants to go next? Okay, go ahead, Adam. Uh, council, deputy mayor.
Thank you through the mayor. Uh, thank you. As the manager of horse, uh, Jennifer Moore, for your presentation. And thank you, of course, to everybody who took the time to give public comment, um, and are following this topic. I did want to start with a few questions. There were a lot of public comments that, um, you know, effectively asked, you know, why we're here today and why now? Um, and I wondered if, if staff could take a moment to just talk a bit more about how, how we found ourselves, um, in the position in which we, uh, believe that we now have commitments, uh, within our certified housing element to, to pursue some of these proposals.
Um, yeah, I can answer that question, and then maybe, um, our community development director, Zach, Zachary Dahl would be able to, um, enhance that response. But, um, as, as we tried to illustrate at the beginning of, of the presentation, the way that the housing element goals, policies, and programs are written, um, there, there are certain policies where there is, um, we're saying a commitment. There are policies where we are committed to researching or recommending. Um, so there's a potential policy there. Um, and so, for example, with number one, as has been mentioned multiple times, that's one where it was stated that there would be, um, a policy that, um, applies to tenants who have been in their units less than a year. Um, and, uh, the, the housing element, um, goals, policies, and programs is in our certified housing element, meaning that we are required to follow through on every single one of those items. But there are subtle differences between, between the items that we're trying to highlight as even as we go through these questions. Now, how we arrived at, um, these specific items, um, this was part of the housing element process, which happened over, over several years. So I might pass it, uh, to Zach to, to add more there.
Great. Um, good evening, Zach Dahl, Community Development Director. Uh, building off of, of what Rachel said, I was actually just looking back at some of the original presentations and the first draft housing element to understand how the language evolved. And, um, for this policy 3.4, um, which focuses on, it's under the protection category in the housing element, and it also supports, um, how we can address affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH. At the year, um, first study session, it was a joint study session between council and planning commission back in February of 22, um, we were teeing up each of these areas and then asking for direction on where, um, the, the decision makers wanted to go with, um, our commitments, with the areas that our housing element focused on, given that we had a lot of pressure to make sure we were making progress in each of these areas. And, and so one of the areas that looks like, and this is the first, um, sub-program in 3.4, which is expanding AB 1482 in, to expand protections into that first year, that language exists in that form, going back to some of the original, um, direction that was provided. So that looks like that originated at the local level, and, and that was something, because we did tee up, what's the level of commitment? And in some cases, rental registry started more committal and then, um, changed to kind of more studying. And I think as we looked at it, recognizing what's the best approach. But with regard to the AB 1482 extensions, that language stayed consistent. So I think that's kind of, if you're going back to Genesis, when we were first building out our programs and policies, that was some of the pieces, because I was looking back and saying, was there, there a direction from HCD or where did it come from? And it looks like that was more of a local commitment, given the overarching programs of what we had to deliver in addressing AFFH and, and meet our obligations for advancing protect tenant protection as well. So I don't know if that, that helps a little bit, but at least for the AB 1482 piece. And then the rental registry evolved a little bit more in terms of the form that's in our certified housing element.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. I did have a question on the, let's see. I, one of the questions before council tonight refers to strengthening the enforcement penalty structure. This would be, I guess, question three that we're looking at. Uh, yeah. Um, I, I just wondered if staff could talk a little bit more about whether there's a recommendation from staff on, uh, by how much? Oh, I guess I see here, maybe the recommendation is, uh, shifting from HUD, uh, fair market rent three months, uh, to actual three months?
Yes. Um, elaborating on that a little bit, what we found as we've implemented our, our tenant protection ordinance was that when it came to temporary relocations, it tied to three months of the HUD rate, which if you're just looking purely at a month-to-month rent, there's a closer correlation. But with temporary relocations, that's not always the case. Sometimes there's a motel room, there's temporary accommodations where those costs are often higher. And so as we started to see some of these cases, especially ones that drew out closer to 90 days, we were finding that three months at the HUD rate was not sufficient, and ultimately tenants were paying out of pocket. And so the commitment here was that if, if our local ordinance says we're going to support tenants that are relocated due to a code enforcement activity, unsafe, non-habitable living conditions, we want to ensure that they're provided with financial support for up to 90 days of temporary relocation. Uh, and so it would change the formula and look at a different one just for that temporary relocation piece. So So we're not necessarily increasing penalties. And in, in many cases, that could maybe help incentivize to get it done quicker. Because ultimately, the objective is to get tenants back into their, their unit.
Excellent, thank you. I did have a question about, we heard some public comments and related to CDVG funding. And, and some of the presentation also talked about some legal aid and fair housing services the city already provides through it. But can you help me, like, can, does, can, can these sorts of services funded through CDVG help people outside of the equity priority areas in San Mateo?
Yes, they can. They can help anyone in San Mateo. And the organizations that we fund, of course, also help clients outside of San Mateo. But, but of course, we track their helping in San Mateo. So yes, CDVG funds can be used for a citywide benefit. The idea is that the target population is lower income, kind of by virtue of the fact that they're seeking assistance. So that, that is possible. And it is happening with those three organizations.
Excellent, that's, that's a helpful clarification. And I thought, I wondered if we could try to dig in a little more on what staff sees as maybe differences in costs related to a rent registry proposal versus an alternative that was placed in our staff report, which seemed to be expansioning, expanding our existing systems through business license tax. So would it be all right, maybe I could just ask for a little bit of like, perhaps reminding or explaining the, the difference in what sort of data we might be able to get with each? And, and about how much they, that we perceive they may cost? I guess you touched on the cost part with Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes, but that was specific to if there were a full-on rent registry in place with some kind of new platform. So these, these cities that have implemented it, they've, they've, you know, put out an RFP and there's a firm that creates that specific platform for the rent registry. And that, the information that is sought in a, in a rent registry is very detailed. There's, for every, for every unit. What the city currently collects, obviously, the purpose right now of the, of the business license tax data that we have is not to track the status of the rental housing market in San Mateo. It's to track who's paying the business license tax. So, but the connection is that, of course, if, if you have rental housing units and you're, you have gross receipts, then, then you should be counted in, in the city's existing platform. So the question is, well, can we build on that to get a little bit more information? Because right now, we don't have much beyond knowing what the gross receipts are, what the, you know, location is of the rental units. If we wanted to know how many units or what the square footage is of the units, for example, you know, we, we don't have that information right now. We don't have an exact cost because we have not pursued this avenue. And if council directed us to do so, we would come back with exactly what's possible and what the cost would be. At least if we're working with the current vendor that we have. But it would certainly be, I think, an order of magnitude less than what would be with, coming with a rental registry. They're definitely two different things. I don't know if Zach would like to add anything to that.
You covered it well, I think.
Okay, thank you. And can, can staff speak a little to the, the potential cost and administrative burden on landlords with these proposals? I, I would say particularly if, for example, there were not a just cause no fault eviction for a landlord in, in the next, you know, several years, for example. What beyond, you know, the relocation assistance amount that might change? Would, are we, are we perceiving and can we quantify as, as a perceived cost or burden on, on landlords as a result of some of these proposals?
Staff would not give a dollar amount that we think would add to the, the burden. We don't want to quantify exactly for each of these policies. But there, we could say maybe degree of additional burden. So if there is no, if there is no substantial rehab eviction, if there is no, no cause, or excuse me, no fault eviction taking place, if the, the landlord is simply operating their property, then additional costs would likely be minimal. With the exception of, you know, the rent registry. We did get feedback when we discussed it in the focus groups that reporting, additional reporting of any kind always requires more than what one is currently doing, right? So there is a cost associated with that. Again, it depends on exactly how much information we're asking for. It would also depend on, you know, how much turnover, how much, how much there is to report in a given year on, on the status of the units. If the status doesn't change, then, you know, there's, there's going to be less in the way of reporting. But we did hear that concern raised a lot with regard to a rental registry and some property management companies or landlords' experience with jurisdictions that have a rent registry or that have rent stabilization and require similar amounts of reporting. As for the other policies, you know, it's difficult to say, but if they don't come into play, then they, you know, won't have a lot of additional costs. There's always a cost of compliance. So I don't want to completely, you know, say that the cost is zero. But it's, it's kind of varies depending on what the policy is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Those, those are my questions. And so I can yield for other questions.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Just a quick question about if you could advise, if at all, what sort of education efforts we've executed for awareness around these laws for both landlords and tenants?
That the city has undertaken?
Or partnered with any organizations who would take on the lead of, you know, we have a whole slew of new laws that are coming on the books from the state. And so I'm just wondering what, if we've done anything on that.
Well, I, I do know that when AB 1482 was first being rolled out, that the city had information on its website about that and about those resources, or about, sorry, about resources, especially during COVID. But in the more recent time, there hasn't been as much active education on, you know, done from the housing division. We do work with organizations that do that. So, you know, we fund, as we mentioned, Project Sentinel, for example. We fund fair housing enforcement already. So there is a big education component to that. But there is certainly room to, for additional education, even just using maybe the models from other cities where they have, you know, invested in making more information available or directing residents to an organization that they're partnering with. So there, there's more opportunity there for sure.
At any point, has the housing team been instructed by council to increase knowledge or look at other cities with regards to education outreach on that?
I'm going to defer to Zach on, on past direction.
Yes, as, as part of the overall housing element preparation, the fourth P that we added was promotion. And it was kind of specifically to capture the suite of activities that go in that outreach, engagement, sharing of information. We've got a specific policy that speaks to education with regards to both tenants and landlords and making sure they're aware, sharing resources available. I think those are pieces that we're still working to fully kind of get operational. I am, I think the work was first and foremost getting certified. Then because of the timeline and the fact that we were almost 18 months into the housing cycle before we were certified, we've been playing catch up on a lot of the key policies to stay current. But yeah, I, I think we definitely have plans for that and we're working on ramping that up across the board. But yeah, our whole under goal H4 speaks to the various ways that will address promotion, outreach, engagement and sharing information like you just outlined.
If I may add just, just a little? I, I would also just add to what Rachel touched on, which is that when 1482 first came online, we did partner with the county and do some workshops. And through the pandemic, we did some education. And I would also just add that through our ESL City Services Academy, which we host through the adult school, that we do education on tenant protection. And we do connect those folks in our cohorts, which comes through every year with resources on how to protect themselves as tenants, because we do get a lot of renters through that program. And so we partner up in, in that way as well.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. What do we think as far as how much of our market is rental that we count for? And, and so what I noticed was, we say the city business license tax accounts for 1,028 units and the CoStar database accounts for 1,110. Do we think that that's a reasonable number that we have that as far as rentals in the city of San Mateo?
Those are locations or
Properties.
properties, not number of units. So
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So that varies based on the number of units, which we actually do have some correlation there, though. So does that mean that we therefore are accounting for 92% of the rental properties in the city of San Mateo?
Not necessarily, because we don't, we don't know how, for example, how many single-family homes we're, we're capturing or not capturing with that data. So, so we don't know exactly. Because there, there, we don't, our data from business license tax does not tell us at all how many units are, are in, are in the, the building or the property. We probably are, we almost certainly are getting a business license tax from single-family owners who are renting out those units. But we don't know exactly how many. And then on CoStar, which is the other source that we compared it to, the, the single family is not, is not captured on there. So
At all.
there's this unknown additional however many units, right? So we don't have 100% of the units in this, in the housing stock.
Okay, but for the tax rule, we, we do know that we have an eight, roughly an 8% discrepancy, meaning eight people don't, 8% of people don't have a business license, most likely, in the city of San Mateo.
There may be other reasons that explain the discrepancy. So I don't want to attribute that all to just, you know, we haven't, we're not getting paid the, the tax by those, by those owners. But that, that may very well be part of it, yes.
Okay. And then the number was 50% of rentals, 50% of the, of the city are, city of rentals and 49% of that 50% are low income. So that means that 23% of the city of San Mateo is low income?
That 23% of the city
Because if you have half of 50, you're at 20, 20, 25%, so.
I never do math on the fly.
No, but it's shocking a little bit.
That is what we put in the report.
Yeah, okay.
So that is correct in the report.
Okay. When we see households that are larger households, meaning a larger bedroom count, are we, the, somewhere in the study I saw that we count one person per bedroom plus one. So based on that, do we, do we think that in most cases, when you have a three-bedroom rental, that we only have two incomes? Or do we think that there's a correlation between more incomes in, in the larger units? And, and the reason why I ask this is because there's a lot of pressure on the city to be building more units. And I think when I talk to people in my district, I hear from people that, and I see it in my neighborhood a lot, where, you know, families live as a family unit, where there might be a brother and his wife and two parents and three kids all living in a four-bedroom house. And that means that their, their income, while, you know, still has to be very significant to be able to survive in San Mateo, is actually spread usually over more earners. Does that seem accurate?
That definitely does happen, yes. And we, unfortunately, I don't have the rate of overcrowding on, on, up right now, but that's in the housing element needs assessment. So there, there is a, there's an overcrowding element. There's a, not even just overcrowding, but as you're saying, as a strategy for dealing with high housing costs, multiple households may live in the same, especially larger unit. And you might, you will see this on the open market. In some affordable housing units, there might be a limitation on how many households can live in the unit in a deed restricted affordable housing scenario. But yes, we do know that that happens, that households get together in the same unit to be able to cover the rent.
So I think this is my last, I think I have one more question. In the case of people who are displaced, one of the things we've seen, especially in the last year and a half with the wildfires, is that insurance rates for many people have gone up by 100 to 200%. In, in the case of people who are being displaced, would we, or would we consider having something in place for acts of natural disaster? So a, a person here today was telling me, you know, that their house was flooded two years ago. In those types of situations, it, if, if the, provided that they have insurance, obviously, you're going to get some insurance, but insurance might not be able to bridge the gap, which basically could, could cause a catastrophic event where the landlord loses the property and ergo, the person who was living in the property also loses it. So is there any thought around, or have you ever heard of having a natural disaster exception or exemption where it would be less of a penalty in, in those circumstances?
To the, to the landlord?
Yes, well, the landlord, yeah. And it would be trickled down, obviously.
Yes, and because it all depends on how the city chooses to define the, the type of displacement to. We've reviewed various ordinances across, you know, cities in, in this county and, and beyond the county. And they define displacement differently or eligible displacement. So when we're talking about eligibility for relocation assistance, it could be narrowly defined, it could be broadly defined. So I think that is where we would drill down on, well, what would be a qualifying event?
That's okay.
A displacement. And also, cities fund, you know, the relocation assistance in different ways. So, you know, some cities put it on the landlord having to pay. Some cities have a fund. And so it may depend also on, you know, which funding source are we using? That, that determines what the eligible, you know, event is.
Got it. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. I guess next up is, we'll just start with, does anybody else have any other questions they want to add? Before we move on to court. Okay, so why don't we just start with item one? And we'll go through and weigh in, and then we'll move on to two. So who wants to go first on item one?
I can start.
With one, okay.
Yep. And there are just a couple of things to sort of set an overall context for all my specific answers. And Councilmember Shroker Kaditsky spoke about the importance of production. Completely agree. But I also believe in the importance of preservation and promotion. And, you know, Measure T, as everyone knows, I was an active campaigner for. But as Rick Benia said earlier tonight, it's going to take a while for the impact of Measure T to help with increased housing. And, you know, have the trickle-down effect on rental prices will take even longer. So I'm coming at this from, we need to preserve the rental housing, the affordable rental housing we have now. And as many people said tonight and staff reports said, most of it's provided in the smaller buildings, the individual mom and pops. And we absolutely need to ensure that these landlords are fair and transparent in all their practices and work with them to help tenants with histories who have rental emergencies due to unforeseen problems. And as Councilmember Fernandez was asking, I'd also like to see San Mateo expand its education outreach to both tenants and landlords, because I think there's so much that no one knows. to both tenants and landlords, because I think there's so much that no one knows. Particularly around resources available and consequences of laws not being followed. So with that as a backdrop, question number one about our commitment and policy H 3.4. I would support extending San Mateo's regulation to supporting relocation assistance for no fault evictions to those with a tenure of at least 11 months and have the same amount of assistance offered as that provided by AB 1482. But before, as I mentioned before, I'm struggling with, with data before staff, staff returns to the next step. I hope and I recommend that you take a deeper dive on the apparent progress of AB 1482 in reducing no fault evictions, because everyone has said that that is in fact the case. So what is it that work is working? How do we build upon that? And then number two, trying our best, as I asked earlier, to disaggregate the Stanford Law research that shows there were 141 eviction cases and really understand what's going on there and who's doing it. Is it good? Is it bad? Is it? What, what, what is the cause and who is behind it? And tailor any final expanded relocation assistance for no fault evictions based on what we learn. And then I would also request that since this is, this would be new and we don't have full data, that staff comes back in one year with a report as to how the policy is fair, once implemented, and make changes based on what we learned. So that's my answer to question one.
Okay. Who wants to go next on question one? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, through the mayor, I would like to preface my answer to question one with a little bit of broader explanation for my answers as Councilmember Diaz Nash did. Just coming back to the public for a minute, I, I want to appreciate everybody who jumped in and, and shared what they could either tonight or through the community meetings. And as Councilmember Diaz Nash mentioned over several years, housing element process and more. You know, we heard from many renters, advocates and organizations that the, the data we already have suggests that renters broadly tend to earn less than homeowners in the city. And we've been reminded that many at lower incomes are rent burdened, some paying 50% or more of their income or rent just to stay here. Many of these folks rely on local, state and federal services to get by. Given the uncertainty of funding for those programs that we're seeing today, I, I agree that it's an extra precarious time for these people. And I think it's important to consider that when we consider these proposals. I also want to acknowledge that the, the city made commitments in the housing element that has been certified. And I want to make sure that we adhere to those commitments so that we continue to have a certified housing element and avoid negative effects that would come from not making those commitments. But we've also heard from many landlords and property owners that we ought to help address tenants who can't pay rent, which has shown up as a, 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 a big part of the evictions we have seen in the data by building more affordable housing and potentially providing rental assistance. And I, I would agree with those things. I, I hear that inflation, supply chain issues, increased interest rates, insurance rates and more have hit mom and pop landlords hard. And so I, I understand when I hear that adding anything more seems like just too much and that everything is adding up. And I agree that the general plan, and you know, I, I feel that with regard to the supply and production issue, the good news is the general plan and Measure T, I think, takes some, some meaningful steps forward in that department. Although as has been discussed, that, that will take some time. We're already seeing many development applications coming in. And there's language in there that looks into encouraging larger family size units in, in our, in our general plan and housing element. We've, we've had discussions about this. We see that townhomes and other units to own are being proposed in some of these developments. So I think there's a lot to be optimistic about there, but and I'll also just say that I'm open to city sponsored rental assistance when we get to that question to, to make sure that we're not just talking about proposals that would only add to the burden of landlords in this, in this shared goal of making sure that the city is a livable, affordable place for as many people as we can. But I, I feel like there's no silver bullet here. So I, I don't think that supply is the only answer that's going to allow for us to help those who are, have been hurting for quite a while and, and are in a precarious situation now. I feel like we need a multi-pronged approach. And so in that spirit, I also, and I'll also just say that I feel like one thing we've, we can probably all agree on is we don't quite yet have enough data. And I, so it's, it's difficult to make decisions, I feel, with the data we have. That with, you know, 100% confidence that they're going to make the kind of impacts that we're hoping for. And yet we, we know that there is suffering in our city. And so that's kind of the backdrop for how I'm going to approach the answers to these questions. For number one, I, I believe, you know, as, as has been stated, we, we have made a commitment to move forward on this. And I think my, my, my belief is that, you know, I, I, I could see us offering to day one. I, I, I'm open to a discussion with my council colleagues. We already heard from one who, who went onto, I feel like the other side of the spectrum on this. I have heard from some landlords who indicated that, you know, at day one, there's there, there may be unintended consequences as we, as we've heard. And I, I, I think that while it's important to take a step forward tonight, if, you know, if we, if we don't have everybody on, on day one, I, I might, you know, I, I, I understand. And, but I, I do think that the number of months of assistance, I think, has been, you know, demonstrated in, in other city ordinances we have as being set in other cases at, at three months with this HUD fair market rents. And so to me, going to three months for, for just cause no fault evictions at the, the, the period that we discussed tonight would be merely lining this up with other types of no fault evictions, including the red tag sort of displacements that we've discussed. So I, I guess I'll try to end there to allow others to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Want to go next, Andy?
I am. First of all, can we do a time check since it's almost 11 o'clock?
So we'll do it. I was looking at the clock too, so ask for a vote when we go get to 11. So we got another eight minutes.
Okay, sounds good. I would, I understand where both of my colleagues' perspectives from. I would probably be at, I just want to thank everybody for their testimony today, but I think I'm probably going to be at nine months and three months of assistance.
Okay.
I really appreciate everyone's comments. I really want to say thanks to Adam and Lisa for being so thorough. I think I'm at keeping with what's current policy with AB 1482, 11 months. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so I'm not going to get into this a lot, other than whatever we do here, we can always revisit. So for that reason, I think I am also in alignment with 11 months. And with the expectation that we come back in a year, revisit it, see how it's doing and decide if we need to, you know, stick with that or, or adapt it.
How many months of assistance?
Three months.
Okay, so what I hear is we got a majority at 11 months, but I don't have it for the, how many months of assistance? I have two that are at three. I got one at one.
I think I'd be at one for now.
So am I the tiebreaker? Between three and one? Adam, do you want to? No, you're good with who you are. All right. Again, we'll revisit this in a year. I'll do one month.
So just to the point of revisiting this in a year, actually, we're going to be working. So we'll start developing ordinance to come back to the council for further consideration. And it'll be up to the council at that time to make the final decision. And then after that, if you guys decide to move forward, I'm here in probably a year to check in and see how that's going.
Sounds great.
So what I'm hearing consent at least three votes is to bring back an ordinance at relocation assistance less than a year with a trigger at 11 months, basically, and one month of relocation assistance. I see three nodding heads here.
Okay.
Four. Okay.
So number two, would the city council like to pursue a policy related to right to return as described in policy H three, H dot three dot four subsection B? Who would like to go first? All right, we'll start and just work our way over.
So I would support absolutely notifying the tenant that the former apartment or home is going back on the market after substantial remodel. And, you know, tell them that they're able to apply to, to go back into it, but that it would be at whatever the revised rate would be and not at the same rate that they, if they're, that they left on. Assuming that there was substantial remodel and there was cost, that that would be taken. So it would be notification and then in a revised rate based on cost.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Swirg.
I would echo the comments of Lisa Diaz Nash. I would be supportive of notifying the tenant about the right of return after substantial remodel at the new market rate and commensurate with the value of the improved property. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're, we're good. We'll all go that way. So moving on, question number three. Given the commitment in policy, sorry, was there a question?
Sorry to slow down the, the train. But so I heard commensurate with the value of the improved property. So does that mean that there is some kind of substantiation that would need to happen after the, the substantial rehab is done or just this is the new rent now?
This is the new rent now.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be sure that that was not.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Question number three, given the commitment to policy H three, four subsection C to strengthening the enforcement penalty structure of the city's existing ordinance on relocation assistance for tenants displaced by code enforcement activities, does the city council wish to move forward with changing the existing requirement, three months of HUD fair market rate? Or is it fair market rental to actual three months rent or costs? Who wants to go first? Just start this way then.
Mr. Largely.
Deputy Mayor, you want to start?
I'd say I support this.
Okay. Anyone else want to go next?
Well, I have a clarifying question about strengthen the enforcement of the penalty structure. So is the goal that we're aiming to increase the penalty on landlords who are not providing proper assistance? Or is it to keep the same penalties and come up with ways to better enforce them?
I think the latter is the characterization that we, we would give of, of strengthening the enforcement penalty structure. So it's not to increase the penalty, but just to improve what is currently in place.
So just to confirm, not stiffening penalties?
Not stiffening penalties. However, as is stated here, if the, the shift were to go from the, the HUD FMR to actual costs up to three months, that could be more. But it is not a penalty in that sense. It's just to support the actual cost of the relocation.
And then I think going back to Ms. Fernandez's earlier comments on education, I think there would need to be quite a bit of education to both tenants and landlords. And then, you know, if it is substandard or unsafe housing, I would just add that it goes to a hearing officer as well. So those are my comments, but generally support.
Yeah, and I would agree with what you just said.
I would echo that.
Okay, then I think we have a five count. Can we get up the next two questions, please? Thank you. Oh, three more questions, sorry. I was like getting ahead of myself. Would the city council like to pursue a rental registry, pursue a different model for data tracking or rely on existing data sources to achieve the goals of policy H three, H dot three dot six?
Through the mayor, real quick, can we get a vote? We're about five seconds over.
Yeah, no problem. We are at 11. Do we have five or majority vote to extend?
Yes.
Okay, five all. We'll continue. Okay, who wants to go first?
Take a stab.
Thank you.
So I, one, the one thing that came, became very apparent in all of the conversations I've had with all of the folks who wanted to meet with me on this topic. Thank you all for organizing those meetings. I learned a lot. And then also with city staff is that we are lacking data. And I think a real key to that is, you know, there might be, this might be a good opportunity to implement something like a rent registry where, you know, we are going to actually get data on the number of rental units that we have. It has been implemented in other cities. And I think it might be something that we might want to explore.
Okay. Councilmember Diaz Nash.
There we go. Respectfully, I don't recommend going with a rental registry. But I do recommend doing a lot of continued outreach to the groups we spoke with in the preparation of the report and other groups. I mean, you did a great job. I think there's a lot more that needs to get done. And looking at how do we use the data sources that we have? So business license registration may not be everything, but it does give us a lot of information. Subscribing to commercial services, you would know better than I which are the ones. And I think, you know, looking at what is the county or other regional groups doing and how could we potentially learn from that? But that's separate from a, a rental registry, which I think, you know, is, is too unknown and onerous at this point to continue considering.
Councilmembers, we're good to go.
Thank you. I agree with Lisa Diaz Nash, but I would be open to other, you know, exploring other data sources or other types of solutions.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. You know, I think to the, to the broader question of would the council like to pursue a rent registry, pursue a different model for data tracking or rely on existing data sources? I, I would sort of want to say, yes, I think we should pursue something more. I, I am of the opinion that from what I've heard to date, from what I've read and understood, it seems to me that a rental registry is likely something that would benefit the, the city best in this regard. It's, I, I do think though, as, as Councilmember Fernandez mentioned, I, I echo that I feel like we, we haven't yet quite gotten enough data, even on that question and, and the examples. To me, like, the examples we see in the staff report from other cities appear to vary a lot depending on other
appear to vary a lot depending on other programs and policies that those cities may have. We may not have all those. So I would ask that we, I would propose to the council that we keep an open mind and look into options that would work more for San Mateo, which could include a rental registry in addition to other options as described by staff. So I want to see if there might be an opportunity to have like a more open ended look with that one into options that could include a rental registry or others and have a some like a little more work put into what would work for the city of San Mateo, according to staff, and get something of a cost comparison from there.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a really interesting couple of points that come to mind. One is, you know, the cost. So when we looked at the four cities in the study, all but one had populations that were significantly smaller than the city of San Mateo. And so if you extrapolate that, you know, the one thing that was impressive was that Concord with a population that's the only one that was larger than San Mateo was doing a rental registry for only $81,000 a year. So if we do do a rental registry at some point, I think we should definitely figure out how they're doing that. When we look at the other cities, though, you know, they're spending 150 to $81,000 a year. If you extrapolate that to a city our size, you're talking about spending 200 to $560,000 a year to manage a rental registry. Again, we don't have any real data other than extrapolation, which is obviously. But but there's a concern. I mean, we have a huge deficit we're walking into next year. And I'm just not sure that spending even on the low $150,000 is is the right thing when we have quite a bit of data, which I think we could continue to parse and go through. So I think I'd like to table the rental registry for one year, and I'd like to spend that time working with the data that we have and maybe do like a bi yearly check in to see with all with all these different databases that we have at our fingertips, what data can we be reporting out to both the landlords and to the tenants and see where that puts us? So for that reason, I I don't support it at this time, but I do support keeping an open mind to looking at it. I just want to make sure that we continue to work with all the available data. And I think there's a lot of data as well with with the business licenses that we still could do a better job of slicing. And that isn't meant as a as a knock on the team, other than I think there's more data to be to be parsed.
So what I heard from the council is three nos at this time.
Right, with a reopener in a year.
That's.
Or a review in a year.
A review in a year? I'm looking at everyone else? That's what the mayor does.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And also, I want some data reporting between now and then, too. Like, I want us to use the apps that we have. We have Zumper and was it Comstar? I'd like to make sure we're using those tools to try to to get a beat on how how we're actually doing. Okay. That was question four. Question five. Are there other policy alternatives that the city council would like to pursue based on the finding of this report, emergency rental assistance funding and program?
I want to go first.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, through the mayor. I'm getting better at that.
I just want to echo my earlier statements. You know, I would love for this council to be able to have really meaningful conversation about ways to accelerate production in the city. And I just, you know, would welcome input from staff on that front. So those are my comments.
Okay. On five? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
I totally dig an emergency rental assistance funding program. So I'd love to see that. I'd love to see the council consider that.
Yes, also. Okay.
Absolutely. And I think that the, I mean, this is the number one problem, right? Nonpayment of rent. So guess what? Let's focus on what we can do to help that and really understand what are the reasons? And, you know, I know one provider, but there may be several providers, you know, third party nonprofits, and really learn from their experience. And also look at, you know, whether it's outright assistance or does anyone do microloans? I mean, I don't know all the details of it, but absolutely, I think this is something we should get behind.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, through the mayor, I would say I I also support looking into an emergency rental assistance program. And I I just think that there's there's, there's a lot of potential there. We heard that other organizations provide various types of rental assistance. And so hopefully, there's, you know, some opportunity to partner. I think there's been talk a little bit about CDBG funding and how there might be an opportunity to leverage something differently. So we could consider that as an opportunity to not think about the cost of it at face value, perhaps. So generally in favor. I also did want to make a point here that I think all the policies we're looking at tonight, you know, may have a different potential approach for small landlords and large landlords. I think Housing Manager Horace brought up in her presentation something to this effect that, you know, from the data we've gotten, it's possible that some of these may have different, you know, more applicable targets, I guess, and applications. So like, I guess, just as an example, but I think staff would have a better idea. You know, small landlords in the like, like one to four units or something, not a large amount. And then larger landlords just sort of whatever. I would defer actually to our staff on on the right split. But I just wanted to, I guess, it seemed like this was maybe an opportunity to bring something like that up. And many council members brought up increasing outreach on existing laws. It sounds like we have some of this in our housing element already via the promotion piece. So I think I think those are my comments.
Fantastic. I support this. I also concur that educate. This is the one I really tug into, education, education, education. There's a lot of things that are available under current and newer state laws. We need to make sure that people know what their rights are and where. And and that goes for both, you know, the tenants and the landlords. What's the expectation of them? So yeah, I support this emergency rental assistance funding program and also encourage that we put an effort on education. Okay, this is the last one.
Through the mayor.
Sure.
I may. Does the city have a, do you have a perspective on what the dollar or fund amount might look like?
So if we were looking at, we'd use, I believe, we could use multiple sources, but I would think it'd be our Affordable Housing Fund specifically that I'd be looking at. And probably, probably as a start, we'd have to, I'd have to talk to our finance director, but probably 150,000. And we'd also have to then talk to figure out who would administer that as well. I believe during COVID, Samaritan House did that on behalf of the city previously. Be something to go out and talk to them, because then there's got to be some type of fee for the administration of that, too, and bring back a package. So it's probably, you're probably looking at 150 plus the admin fee. So probably about 200, I would think.
And you'll be bringing that back to us?
Yeah, we would bring that back. Absolutely.
So we're good on five. Thank you, Danielle. Question number six. Did I already say question number six? Does the city council wish to prioritize any of these items as staff continues with implementation? Who wants to go first? Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Well, I think since nonpayment of rent is the number one reason, we should prioritize the emergency rental assistance. And then I also would, and that's also, I would then go after, go toward the establishment of the hearing officer for appeals regarding unsafe and substandard housing, because we've lived through some difficult appeals and it's not, it's certainly not fair for the tenant who's appealing or for the landlord. And I think getting that process into a professional setting with a hearing officer would go a long way to fulfilling our obligation under that, that whichever policy that was.
I agree with you.
And education, obviously, all the time, every day. Yeah.
Okay, so you're good. Go ahead.
I agree with all of Councilmember Diaz's points.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
I guess I'm not sure that I disagree, so we'll leave it at that.
Is there anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. I got nothing else. Those are the three. Those are my top three, so let's let's do that.
We have, we have the direction that we need. Thank you.
We have the direction we need. Thank you so much. Thank you, the whole community for coming out. I know this was a long meeting, but thank you. We appreciate all of you.
Through the, through the mayor. Yeah, understanding the the hour, I think that we can punt on the blue sky to the next meeting. It's a light agenda, if that's okay.
Okay.
And we can just finish up here.
Yep. So we'll go to, we'll skip item number 11 and.
To May 5th on that.
Yep. And move item number 11 to our next council meeting. So that means we're going to move right into, do I have anything before I go right into reports and announcements? We're going to go right into reports and announcements. Who would like to go first? Nobody wants to stay for reports and announcements? Just the best part. Okay, just kidding. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
Just a reminder that we are having a groundbreaking for our new Central Park Playground on Thursday at 4:30. It is years in the making. All the cool people are going to be there and probably staff too, because they have to be. So we hope you'll make it.
Yes. Who wants to go next?
Okay, so absolutely be there. I just want to congratulate Parks and Rec, Public Works, the Police Department, and everybody else who was involved in a spectacular extravaganza this past Saturday. It was the most unbelievable thing. If you haven't been there, go next year. But it was so wonderful and just a great, 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 and well run, too. And also, just to remind everybody, this past Sunday, Head West came back to the market. So the third Sunday of every month down on the mall, and there were lots of people buying lots of beautiful things. So mark the third Sunday on your calendar. And then also just if anybody hasn't looked at today's paper, there was a great article about businesses on South Railroad. And that this, this was an opportunity to see how a neighborhood has sort of evolved and how businesses have gone in and what a great job they've done. And I, you know, just say, we need to do as much of that in supporting our businesses as we can and go down there to take a look. So there was a reminder.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, I think I got a few to add. 6:30 PM at the San Mateo PD Station, residents of Bay Meadows are going to be talking with city staff about Bay Meadows parking. Wednesday, the Delaware Bike Lane Project will be discussed at Nueva School. And I don't have the time written down. Is it seven? Call it seven, but look it up to confirm. We talked about Thursday's groundbreaking. There are three events on Saturday. And unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town for my uncle's memorial. So I am hoping that I can still get all of you out to some of these events. The three events are the Bayfront Cleanup, which starts at 9:00 AM at Ryder Park. And that is a fun event, and my daughter Maeve and I have done it like the last nine years. So we're bummed we're missing it. But hopefully, we'll get people out for the Bayfront Cleanup. It's a great event. There's also an event being hosted by the Red Cross, which is Sound the Alarm. It's going to be held at the San Mateo Adult School, which is, thank you, council member. But it's a great program that's going around promoting, making sure you're checking your fire alarms, smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms, and also helping people who don't have the funding for them, given them. So that's another great event. And then the county has an event as well, speaking all of fire and disasters. The county has an event on Saturday, the 26th, from 10:00 to 1:00, which is specifically geared towards being wildfire ready and prepared. So if if any of you can, we're all there. Okay. That'd be great. And I apologize in advance that I can't be at any of those events. And if anything goes sideways on Saturday and Sunday, Deputy Mayor will be covering for me. So congratulations, you're the mayor for this weekend. Okay, yes. Hopefully, it'll be boring. Okay, that said.
Are you, are you done?
Yes, I have things to adjourn for tonight.
I just want, that's, yeah.
But is there anything else before I do that? Okay. Well, I'm just doing this for posterity, because there's no one here. But tonight, we're adjourning this meeting in memory of Doris Christian. She passed away earlier this month at the age of 95. Doris was a dedicated public servant who served the city of San Mateo with distinction, first as the deputy city clerk for five years, and then as the city clerk for 12 years, from 1980 to 1992. And I vaguely remember her because I used to do the flag ceremony between those years. Throughout her career, Doris earned reputation for her professionalism, her warmth, and her commitment to good governance. She supported numerous city councils over the years, and many former council members have credited her with playing a key role in their success, offering not just guidance, but also encouragement and a steady hand in times of transition. Doris was admired not only for her efficiency and attention to detail, but also for her high spirited sense of humor, her generous heart, and her unwavering loyalty to the city of San Mateo. She was someone who truly believed in the value of local government. She carried out her responsibilities with grace, enthusiasm, and pride. On behalf of the entire city council and the entire city of San Mateo, we extend our heartfelt condolences to Doris's family and loved ones. We're grateful for her many years of service and for the legacy that she's left behind, one of integrity, kindness, and a deep love for her community. May her memory be a blessing. And we'll take a moment of silence before we do one more. Okay. The other thing that happened the early hours of this morning is that Pope Francis died. This evening, we will also adjourn our meeting in memory of His Holiness Pope Francis, who passed away after a papacy marked by humility, courage, and deep compassion. Born Jorge Mario Bergolio in Argentina, he made history as the first Jesuit Pope, the first Pope from the Americas, and the first to take the name Francis, a reflection of his commitment to simplicity, peace, and care for the marginalized. Pope Francis was widely regarded as a reformer, seeking to bring the Catholic Church closer to the people it serves, advocating for environmental stewardship, economic justice, and the dignity of all human beings. His legacy will not, will be remembered not only for the milestones he set, but for the example he offered of leadership rooted in mercy, listening, and love. May he rest in peace, and may he be blessed, and may we be blessed with another leader who continues his work in the same spirit of hope and humanity. That said, we'll adjourn the meeting. Good night.